I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council Study Session held on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Council Vice President Forsyth, Council Member Stewart, Council Member Fields, Council Member Nueva Camina, Council Member Anderson, and we have Council Member Salahuddin online, and I believe joining us in person in just a moment, and myself, Council President Kritzler. There are five items on the agenda tonight: the Facilities Condition Assessment Update, the 2024 Legislative Session Debrief, status update of the implementation of our Transportation Benefit District and Walkway Condition Monitoring Program, budget preparation focusing on budgeting for equity, and council talk time. The first item on the agenda is the Facilities Condition Assessment Update. Lorraine Hamilton, our Parks and Recreation Director, will introduce this item. Director Hamilton, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. Again, I'm Lorraine Hamilton, the Parks and Recreation Director here at the City of Redmond. I'm joined this evening by my Facilities Manager Quinn Kuhnhausen and our consultants from MANG, who I will let Quinn introduce. The item before you this evening is a study session into our most recent Facilities Condition Assessment, which has reached its completion, and we're here to just share some high-level updates, some accomplishments that have been done since our last Facilities Condition Assessment about 10 years ago, as well as take any questions that you might have. So at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Quinn, and I will pull up our slide deck for our consultants.
Good evening, Council Members. I'm Quinn Kuhnhausen, the Facilities Manager, with us here tonight of Sarah Partap from MANG, and I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to present to you tonight, and I'll be here to help her answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and thanks for your time tonight. We've prepared a PowerPoint presentation that's just going to give an overview of the Facility Condition Assessment process and our findings, and it's pretty high-level, so I'm happy to answer questions that you have as they come along. So first of all, as Quinn mentioned, our firm, MANG Analysis, is the firm that was selected for this Facility Condition Assessment this year. We also have a history with the City of Redmond, and we performed the last Facility Condition Assessment back in 2013, so it's about a 10-year update. This facility condition this time actually had an additional component that relates to sort of the city's sustainability, so we're working with a subconsultant for that portion of the project. That one is still in progress, so tonight I'm really just focusing on the Facility Conditions portion of the project. So just an overview of what was the project purpose. There were sort of four key components to why we're doing this project. So first of all is just to understand the conditions of your city-owned buildings, create a registry of the major maintainable equipment, so that's just writing down what large pieces of equipment you have where, and then we're also creating both short-term and long-term maintenance needs and cost estimates. So before I get into kind of the details of the findings, just a little bit about our process and some terms you're going to be hearing me use tonight. So first of all, the assessment preparation. I like to talk a little bit about this so you kind of know where our data is coming from. So before we get out into the field and have the engineers digging around in the buildings, we do a lot of preparation work. So first of all, we're reviewing the 2013 condition data, the deficiencies that were noted at that time. We can see what those were, so we can kind of get an update look specifically at those issues, and then document new issues, of course. We're also reviewing the energy performance of each building. We are getting feedback from Quinn and his team and some building occupants via a questionnaire, so we send that out for every building. And then, once we are getting closer to coming onsite, we actually have the facilities team accompany us, so as we're walking through, Quinn's team can say, "Oh yeah, we did a remodel here," or "We keep having this recurring issue here." So we have a lot of different sources of data even before we get out into the field for the visual assessment. And I will say that the team here at the city has been extremely helpful, the facilities team. They were very involved. You know, sometimes we get varying levels of participation, and the team here has been really great at following up with any document requests we had or just answering a lot of questions in the field. So thank you guys for that. That was very helpful for our process. So now getting into the actual facilities that we reviewed. So this is the breakdown of what we assessed during this condition assessment. There are nine fire buildings, so there's the six stations and then a couple additional facilities at the fire stations, City Hall, the Redmond Pool, the municipal parking garage, the two small SWAT training buildings, public safety, the teen center, and the RCCMV. And the image that you see on the right-hand side, obviously that's the map of where the facilities are located, and you'll see these colored dots come up again later in the presentation. So what those are showing is the size of the circle indicates the square footage of the facility, and then the color is an indicator of the condition. So the darker green is the better condition, based on the Facility Condition Index, which I will define in a second. So greener is sort of better condition, getting yellower and into orange are the poorer condition. So that's a nice graph to see, just so you can see at a glance, good, bad size right there. And so now getting into some of the terminology, I'm hoping that you guys have had at least some time to review the detailed report and both the summary report. There's a lot of very specific terms in there, but some of the more common ones and that I'll refer to tonight are listed here, so I wanted just to define those. So first of all, an observed deficiency, which we sometimes call an OD. I try not to abbreviate it, but I might. So an observed deficiency, those are things that are either seen by our surveyors in the field or are disclosed to them by the facilities team. Like if it's a leak, it might not be leaking when we were there, but we were told about it. And the other criteria for being a deficiency is that it needs to be addressed either within that same year or a five-year period, and has a direct cost of at least $5,000. So things that we're thinking are more minor, less than $5,000, those aren't going to be written up, you know, just carpet issues in a single room or aging paint in one area, those that are below the $5,000 threshold, we don't write those up as an individual deficiency. But as they get larger and more involved, that's when we will create those one-page summaries that are included in the detailed report. The second term, predicted renewals, those are the longer-term cost and timings of maintenance needs at each facility. So that picks up where the deficiencies end, so those begin in 2029 and extend through 2042, and those are based on a model. So they're not specific issues that we're seeing broadcast out in the future. Those are based on the expected useful life of the types of systems you have in your buildings and the condition that they are right now. So for instance, if right now you have a roof that was installed that's expected to have a 25-year life, and you're in year 10, our model is going to populate a cost for renewing that roof 15 years from now. So it does that for every subsystem of every building across the city's portfolio, and then aggregates them for each year. The third term, opportunities, those are a little bit more open-ended. So those are things that our surveyors will have noted in the field that are opportunities for improvement in various ways. It could be energy efficiency, it could be safety and security, it could be just user comfort. So those are not things that are required, and they're not time-bound. They're just options for the city to review. If you're doing something in that facility, you might consider implementing some of those opportunities. The replacement value, or the current replacement value, CRV, this is the value of the components of the facility as it was originally built. So I want to stress, it's not the same thing as a replacement cost. If you were to tear down and rebuild the facility, it would be definitely more than that. It's closer to an insurance value, but just a value number put on each facility. The Facility Condition Index, that's a really common term in the industry of Facility Condition Assessment. It is the ratio of the maintenance backlog of each building divided by the current replacement value. So if you have $5 million in backlog in a building, that's $10 million, you'd get an FCI of .5. So the higher that number gets, the poorer condition, and that's what drives that green-to-orange shift in the color. So the higher that FCI gets, the more orange it's going to show in the graphics. And then the final one here is just a rapid visual assessment. So just to kind of talk about how we did this, this is a walkthrough assessment. We're not doing any destructive testing, we're not doing any sampling of hazardous materials. Depending on the size of the facility, most buildings we spend about half a day in, some of the larger buildings we will spend a full day in, and that includes getting on the roof, wherever it's safe and possible to get on the roof, going around the exterior of the building, and then assessing the interior spaces, as many as are available. And then the final piece of terminology is infrastructure versus building. So I won't go into building, you guys all know what a building is, all the components that are in the building. When I say infrastructure, I mean, you know, the site systems related to the building. So it's not necessarily assessing the entire acreage of your parcel, but all the systems that support the building that are on the site. So those are things like your parking areas and pedestrian paving sidewalks, security, if there's perimeter security, site lighting, storm sewer drainage, that kind of stuff is referred to as infrastructure. All right, so now getting into a little bit more about the findings, and because we had the benefit of being your consultant in 2013, we were able to kind of compare how the buildings were scored then versus how they're scored now. So again, this is based on the Facility Condition Index. It's that same, you know, the orangier it looks, the worse condition, the greener it looks, the better. So this is a comparative side-by-side of buildings that worsened or improved. So as you can see, in the far column on the right, a lot of them say worsened in red. However, I'd like to note that they're very minor. So a lot of those that worsened were actually very close to being new or were in like really good condition, and now they're still in good condition, they're just not as good. So just because they worsened doesn't mean that's bad, that's actually pretty typical. Same things with the buildings that improved. One that had a significant improvement was the pool building. You know, a lot of time and effort was put into that, and that's reflected here, going from the .23 all the way up to a .11. That's a really great improvement. And then the teen center, even though it worsened, it was only by .01, and I will also say that a building that's in that condition, that configuration, it takes a lot of effort and money to keep it from getting much worse. So I know that building has a lot of hazardous materials in it, which complicates maintenance and things like that. So even just maintaining it over a 10-year period with only a slight kind of depreciation in the condition is pretty remarkable. So that's just the scale of, or sorry, whether it got worse or better. And then this next slide shows the scale of the change. So what you're seeing at that top one is Fire Station 17. It was not, it's not the worst condition of the buildings, but it had the largest negative change of worsening, and I know you guys are aware of some of the issues that are out there that are in practice of, you know, getting roofing and siding and things like that worked on, and all the way down to the pool building, which had the greatest improvement from the poorer condition up to the good condition. So again, this is that FCI dot chart that was shown on a map earlier. This shows it scored or kind of arranged by age and condition. So the x-axis across here is showing the original date of construction, so further to the left is older, further to the right is newer, and then the y-axis, the higher up it is, the poorer the condition based on the FCI. So as you can see, the teen center, it's the oldest, and it's the worst condition. You guys actually have a very beautiful downward sloping line, which is nice statistically appropriate. So sometimes you have some outliers, but yours is just a nice line as you expect it. You know, the pool, based on its age, normally you would expect it to be a little bit higher, but because you guys have done a lot of improvements there, it's in kind of better condition than you might expect for its age. So that's just another way to get it at a glance. So at that, you can see the teen center, Fire Station 11, and the annex building, Fire Station 13, and Fire Station 12, and public safety buildings are kind of like the highest target for, you know, ones that might need a closer look at what's going on in those facilities. So now this is getting into, instead of just condition, this is our first graph relating to costs. So here we're showing the total deficiencies for all buildings across the entire city's portfolio is about $26.6 million, and again, that's covering the time of 2023, which was when the assessments were done, through 2028. Beyond that, when you're getting into the predicted renewal period, that's the everything based on the time schedule needing to be done all the way up through 2042. And so that predicted renewal estimate is close to $100 million, and then the opportunities, again, those can be done anytime, they're sort of a do them if you want to, you don't have to do them, that's about $62.5 million. So in the chart, the red are the deficiencies, the blue are the predicted renewals, and that little dotted green line going across, that's the average. So if you had the budget available and you wanted to do everything and split it out evenly, that would be a budget of about $6.5 million a year. And so one other way that I kind of chopped up this data to help you kind of figure out, you know, what the next steps are, is comparing the sort of the concentration of the deficiencies. So I took the total dollars of the deficiencies at each building divided by the square foot of that building to get a, you know, like a price per square foot of all the deficiencies, and compared that to the price per square foot of the value of the building, which is the CRV, and then there's that percentage column on the right. So I would kind of ignore the north and south SWAT buildings, where they say they're, you know, 286%. That calculation is going to be a little bit skewed because those buildings are so small. They have a small amount of deficiencies, but divided by a very small area. So after that, you get to Fire Station 11 Annex, which feels right, like that is not in great condition, you would expect that to be towards the top. So that's just another way of comparing it. You can see at that annex building or the teen center, you know, you're close to 50% or greater than 50% of the per-square-foot cost of its value in just deficiencies. And then just getting into, just again, to reiterate some of the cost exclusions and other considerations when you're digesting this data. Again, CRV, not equivalent to the cost of a new building, it's really just a value that we put on the facility for doing some of these calculations like the FCI. So if you were to redesign the facility, rebuild it, it's definitely going to be higher than the CRV value that we're reporting. A second thing that's important to consider is if you decided to try to undertake and improve every deficiency at one of those facilities that has a lot of issues, you may trigger additional code compliance upgrades. So right now, there might be systems there that are grandfathered in that are okay, but if you trigger that substantial upgrade, it might bring in additional projects that are not included here. For those longer-term predicted renewals, those blue cost estimates that are from 2029 to 2042, again, those are based on rough estimates on models. We did not do an individual cost estimate and breakdown for each building. What we do is we create sort of a generalized model, several different models for the different types of buildings that you have, and so those costs are based on a model. So those are really good for long-term budget planning and rough order-of-magnitude estimating. So in a year, do you need 10 million, or do you need 100 million? But it's not so good for in this year, do you need 10 million or 11 million? Or is it this year or maybe the next year? But it gives you a big, big picture of about when and about how much. And then finally, we were reviewing the physical conditions of the building, and we're not looking at things like the efficiency of the layout or the programmatic functionality. So the building might not be in too bad of condition, but it might not really be suited or built for what you're currently using it for. So for instance, the teen center, as you guys know, that's been a city hall, it's been a fire station, it's gone through a lot of iterations over the years. So for the program that's operating out of that building right now, it might not be physically the best fit for that building. So, and that's true for every facility, so we're not really looking at the efficiency of the buildings, just the actual conditions. And then here are just a couple examples of the deficiencies, some common ones that are easy to understand, and the pictures aren't too crazy-looking. You know, a really common one is end-of-life roofing system, so that's showing the roof at Fire Station 11. And then an HVAC deficiency we have is a cooling system or a lack of a cooling system in the telecom room. You know, you don't want those spaces to get too hot, so typically you would have a cooling system, there's not one there. So those are the kind of things we're looking for in the field. So now I was going to go through a few specific buildings. If anybody had a chance to read the summary report that was provided, one of the tables created in there is like the highest deficiency. So there's a certain number, 13 or 15 deficiencies that are over $300,000, and several buildings have multiple of those large deficiencies, and so that's what I was going to call out here specifically. So the first one that we're looking at is the public safety building. And so what we're highlighting here, I mean, you guys know that that's got some issues, but they've also, a lot of the issues out there have been, have a plan and have been budgeted for. Not all of them, but some of these are in progress. But the three highest ones out there were a renewal of the elevator systems, it's estimated about $1.5 million, updating the HVAC controls, and some of the water source heat pumps, which is close to $1 million. So those three altogether, just the top three at that building are $508 million in deficiencies. The next one at the teen center, the highest cost ones, the exterior walls and windows are lumped together because they're similar and they're related, but it's related to the, they have single-pane aluminum windows, so they're not very energy efficient, and some of the seals are failing. Also, some of the, you can see in that picture, some of the siding is having some moisture issues, so walls and windows combined out there, exterior walls and windows is about $338,000. The roof is at end-of-life, that's another little over half a million deficiency. And then the next highest one was ceiling tiles. You know, they're just aged, they may and may not have hazardous materials, some of them are stained from past water leaks, so that's kind of highlighting at the teen center. And then the third one that I highlighted was Fire Station 17, which is not the worst condition, but it's the one that had that large negative change. And so some of the issues out there are known and are planning to be worked on. I believe you guys have somebody that's under contract or about to be under contract to work on some of these. The largest one is related to the exterior wall systems that are not installed correctly and are having a lot of moisture intrusion issues, so that's about a $1 million deficiency right there. Similar with the exterior windows, you can actually see the gap in that picture, you know, they're not moisture-tight or airtight, so you have a lot of energy efficiency coming in through those. And then the third highest, most expensive one at that station is related to the cooling system, which is just under $200,000. So overall, that is the big picture, and I know you guys are going to have a lot of more detailed questions, which I'm happy to answer.
Thank you so much for that presentation and for doing this analysis of our city facilities. Other questions from the council? Council Member Fields?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Couple quick overview questions. The OD model, what are some of the key parameters besides square footage and age of building? Like the use of, the type of use, or whatever, what else do you use to drive that predictive cost?
Are you asking about the deficiencies, the short-term things, or the longer-term predicted costs?
You called it forecasted future needs based on per-square-foot model and age of building.
Yeah, so those are the predicted renewals. So that, we create a cost model for each building, you know, like a large modern city hall building like this, we have a professional cost estimator on the team who will say, a building that's similar to this one, not exactly the same, may be valued at $650 per square foot. And if you break down that $650 per square foot, the way we've broken down each building into the various subsystems, you know, there's the exterior systems, there's the interior systems, there's the active heating and cooling systems, each of those systems within that cost model is given a value. So of that $650 per square foot, maybe $25 a square foot is attributed to the roof, and maybe $10 a square foot is attributed to the floor coverings. So all those aggregated add up to that overall model, and so based on the age of each of those systems, if, like I mentioned, if it's a 25-year roof that is in year 10, 15 years from now, it's going to times the square footage of the building by the value of that system, and it will also apply cost escalation. So we provide like the direct costs, and we provide like the escalated costs both in the report.
So just to restate the question and maybe hopefully simplify it, what I'm trying to understand is you have different kinds of buildings with different uses. How do you input into the model? I get that the model is complex and the algorithms and everything that's inside the model. What I'm interested in knowing is, when you're using that model, what kinds of things you use as input drivers besides square footage and age of building?
So maybe the complexity of the systems would be one. For instance, a building like this will have, you know, complex AV systems that we're using right now, whereas the fire stations or the teen center would not have that. So in the model for this building would have an allotment for systems that aren't present in other buildings. Some buildings will have cooling systems, some will not have cooling systems, so there, either is or there isn't cost dedicated to those systems. So it's sort of the types of systems and then the complexity of those systems. Does that answer the question?
Sort of. I think I can extrapolate.
Okay.
One other question, when you were talking about your project purpose, create registry of maintainable equipment, does that not exist today?
I believe there are different existing lists of it. Like we did an equipment inventory during our last assessment, but we just updated that. So I, I'm not sure if the city has a similar one already in place, we just kind of go through and check and make sure we have it.
So the follow-up question would be, were we maintaining that list? We, the city, were we maintaining that list, or did you come in and go, "You don't really have a current list, I got to do it all over again?"
It's actually easier for us to create the list fresh every time than to check it for accuracy, so we, I can't really say if it was added on to very much or not, but we recreate it from scratch when we're asked to.
Thank you.
Do you have a comment?
Okay. Is this on? Yeah, okay. Yeah, so when I started nine years ago with the city, they had, I had just, they had just completed the first MANG study, and I've, basically, we don't, we didn't manage the software on that moving forward, but I had the binder and I had, and we have it on the N-Drive. So what I did is I went through and I prioritized the worst-conditioned equipment that was on that list and prioritized by building. And then we, either through capital projects or through our small capital fund that we have, we've been trying to address most of those, and we've been keeping those documents, well, I wouldn't say documents, but we've been keeping that list up to date. Now, with this new system, you know, kind of not telling them what we did and let them come in and see what they can find and give us the new list, the new system that they will be providing to us at the end of this will be a Power BI that we'll be able to maintain moving forward, we'll be able to sort it, we'll be able to do priorities from that, and so I'm really looking forward to not manually doing that and having a tool that will help us do that, and that way we'll be able to report from that, we can report back to the council from that, what we've been doing and how we've been spending the money from either capital funding or from, you know, a Preserve City Building Fund or however we're funding the smaller fixes. So I was, I was happy with the report when they came back to see, you know, that we didn't see a lot of them going the wrong way, but it, that's kind of, hopefully that answers the question. What we did have the list, and, but we didn't maintain the software. The software just was not supported at some point, I don't know why, but having this new software will be great, I'm looking forward to that.
All right, and I appreciate that. I think you answered primarily what I'm looking for, is if we go through the expense and the effort to create these lists, then we should use them, right?
Yes.
And as assets become less useful or it's time to replace them, then we know that we have, and then we can manage the updates, and when they come back in 10 years, you can, they can start with that list. Here are the things we had 10 years ago, here are the things we have today that should help you.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think that, you know, sometimes the technology or the tool, for whatever reason, is not meeting that need, so I think Quinn's team has done a really good job of, of keeping track and managing the things that they've had. Maybe despite not having the greatest of tools, they gave us a preview of the tool that we'll be able to utilize, and I think it's going to allow us to also tell that, just tell the story better and more holistically, because a lot of that work is being, is being done, but it's not super easy to pull it out when it's separate documents in a shared drive kind of thing. So we're looking forward to the ability that we'll have to share that story a little more freely.
Thank you.
There you go.
Darn. At least I didn't swear. The main reason I ask that is because it gives whoever the city leadership is an opportunity to match needs in the time period where the costs, you understand what I'm saying, rather than delay it, delay it, delay it, and then surprise everybody, here we go, you have an opportunity to match replacement costs with the correct time period. That's really what I'm after, so thank you.
It allows us to increase our proactivity.
There you go.
And reduce our reactivity.
Perfect.
That's great to hear. Council Member Stewart?
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the chance to see this come back, and one of my very favorite slides in the whole presentation is actually very early on, because this is a bit inadvertent probably for you, Sarah, but your, your map also demonstrated, the map of our facilities and the square footage also demonstrated where our public facilities are located in our city, which is not our overlay urban center, where we're going to be centralizing so much of our growth moving into the future. So it's great to see that visualized currently. I did have two questions related to the facilities that were not included, so both the MOC and the Redmond Senior and Community Center were obviously not included in, in the report that we got this time. Were they both included in 2013?
The MOC was included in 2013. There was a determination not to include it in this iteration because of the master planning happening out at the MOC. The Redmond Senior Center was included in the 2013 study, but the Redmond Senior and Community Center was under construction, so was not included in this.
Great, yes, thank you. And I just wanted to flag that for the public, too. There were these two facilities, and we know why they weren't included, but I do wonder, since I noticed that this whole document is still a draft, if it's worth putting the 2013 data back in for those two facilities? Just to, this is a very memorable moment in time, we know the current conditions of the MOC like viscerally, like when we go there, we can see how the staff are, you know, making it work. And, and the Senior Center, we know the story there. So... So I, perhaps they could really illustrate a bit more what the numbers mean if they were included. And lastly on that, that's the other thing that I think makes this really important is these are not just facilities that serve program and serve our community, but they are places of work. And so I think we have an obligation to continue to make sure that they are not just statistically appropriate, but also really great places to work here in the city of Redmond. Thanks so much.
Other questions from the council? Councilmember Shalah Houdin?
Thank you, and I appreciate the presentation, apologize for being slightly late. But sorry if I missed this. Specific to the, I believe it's 3.5 in your tables, the significant deficiencies. I'm looking at the subsystem priorities and there's categorizations of medium, high, highest. Was just wondering how those were classified with regard to the action type. I know I see some life safety ones where some are highest priority, but some are, one is just high priority. So just wondering that distinction.
Yeah, I can speak to that. We don't have it in the report right now, but I can provide you guys a table that kind of is a crosswalk of each one of those uniformat systems, you know, that starts with the A or B or C. Each of those is given a, it goes from highest, high, medium, low, lowest priority. And so those are based on how important that system is to the functioning of the building overall. So the ones that are going to fall into the highest are things like the building foundation and the structural walls and the roof coverings. And I believe fire protection systems falls into that highest category. High are going to be things like heating and cooling, water service. You know, decreasing down into, you know, plumbing trim. So like the actual faucets and flush valves and things like that, those are in, I think, medium. And then the lowest ones are going to be things that are generally aesthetic. So those are going to be like wall and ceiling finishes, floor coverings, landscaping. So that's one way that you can kind of decide in a year where you don't have enough budget, address the ones that are highest to keeping the facility intact. You know, you don't want to let a roof leak go longer, but you can probably live with aged carpet for a few more years. And it's not, it's a separate division from the action type. So it's, they don't necessarily correspond. Action type is just done by our assessors. When they noted deficiency, they will categorize it based on what it is to what category it falls under. So a lot of life safety, when you see secured, like life safety ones are often lack of fire sprinkler systems, which are very possibly not required in that building. You know, they, they may have been built that way, but as a best practice, it might be something that you would want to consider adding or upgrading the fire protection systems. And then you have things like energy efficiency as a category. So kind of going through those in order, it's like, life safety is the highest. Then you have code issue. We don't call it code compliance because it's not necessarily non-compliant, but it might become non-compliant if you do an upgrade of the facility. Then we've got things like significant operational impact, ADA accessibility. So those you can kind of overlay with the highest, high, medium kind of scale. They're just two different ways to sort and prioritize.
Great. Council vice president Forsythe?
Thank you. Appreciate the conversation so far, a lot of my questions have been answered, but then raised a new one. So looking at the summary report document, it just triggered in my thought process of the Marymore Community Center that we operate, but we don't own that building, correct? That's still county? So is this information going to then get passed along? Or are we somehow working for some of these improvements? How's that going to play out?
It's a great question. So it's actually owned by the Lake Washington Institute of Technology, so we lease it from Lewitt. We, our contract, there are portions of that facility that we maintain and are within our purview. And then there are larger capital things that are within their purview. So Quinn's team works really closely with the team over at Lewitt, their facilities team, to address the larger issues that might emerge that would fall under their purview. And then we address the ones that are under ours. And so that's pretty well laid out in the contract that we have with them. And they're really, have been very great to work with as we've had any issues that maybe come under their scope. And also give us good recommendations on maybe contractors they've used in the past or services they've used in the past to manage that building.
Got it, thank you. And then for the costs on the teen center, in the more detailed document, I noticed there's a direct cost and the marked-up cost. Does that marked-up cost also include things such as like the abatement for the asbestos? And so that would be an additional cost on top of the marked-up cost?
Yeah, so those are just like on a deficiency-by-deficiency level. And there might be deficiency written. I know you guys have done a hazardous materials assessment of that building, but I think one of the recommendations is to do a more in-depth look at that because that may well influence your decision about like, is it worth doing this repair right now or not? You know, it can complicate obviously the cost and then the actual construction process can be more complicated. I'm sorry, I think I forgot part of your question.
I think you nailed it. We're going to look at that cost and above and beyond.
Yes. Oh, and markup. So there's, you know, the markups that are also carried in that marked-up cost are things like the city's soft costs, contractor overhead and profit. So when you see the direct cost and then the marked-up cost on those individual deficiencies page, when you get to the end of all the deficiencies before you get into the next building, there's one page that shows the breakouts of the costs that are applied to that. So that, you know, the city's soft costs, we just put in a placeholder for that. But your soft costs for doing a project may or may not be that exact amount.
Right, okay, thank you.
Great, other questions? I'll just do first round first. Councilmember Nova Camina?
Thank you. I was just curious, because we have done assessments on our portfolio prior. And of course, we know our business, our staff knows the business, the properties rather intimately. Were there any significant surprises?
No, there was no surprises. Our team has been pretty much in every building and know it inside and out. So I think that that's why, working with MANG again, it was really, this, this report went really well. I mean, we went through the buildings probably more thorough than before because our staff knew the buildings really well. And we even had comments from some of the MANG staff. They're like, why are we doing this for you? You know, but, you know, it's to help us, you know, address it, you know, get all this documented and move forward from here, you know? Because it's really difficult with, you know, trying to get the staff motivated to do these repairs, not having a plan down the road. So having them involved with this and seeing, I mean, they were very excited that MANG was back to do this and that we are looking for, planning for the future and trying to address a lot of these things. So no surprises though, yeah.
It's wonderful, because that's often the, both the positive and the negative. When we are very aware of our portfolio and spending so much time in them, is that yes, we are intimately aware of the issues. And sometimes we're a little too close, so that third-party objective view is quite helpful.
I totally agree, yeah. Because we've, we've got some, you know, trades that are, trades, people that are very focused on just their trade and they don't tend to see some of the other stuff. So it's nice to have somebody come in as a neutral party and help us kind of collect that data and make the right decisions and prioritize, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if we were going to get into other detail later, so I didn't ask this question before. But it's sort of come up. Can you characterize these cost estimates for me? I got to tell you, before you do, when I look at them, I go, wow, I want to bid on every single one of these projects. Because if I'm going to be able to get $50,000 to replace carpet or $50,000 to replace two water heaters, I want that work. So can you at least give us some sense of the purpose of the estimates and what is the likelihood that Director Hamilton is going to do a remarkable job in negotiating much better prices?
Well, while some of them might seem really attractive, there are others that may actually seem a little bit lopsided from the other side. Like, I don't know how many of you have tried to replace windows lately, but I want whatever cost these windows cost. Because they're, I was like, whoa, those are some really well-priced windows. So I would say that these provide us a rough order of magnitude. It's going to allow us to have an idea of when we start to be able to phase certain things in. So kind of as our consultant really put very, actually very well, it's not really necessarily going to tell us, is it 10 million or 12 million? It's going to tell us it's not 100 million. And so we would, will work really closely with our CIP group as we end, with our finance group as we get our really great data from this awesome software that they've put together for us in Power BI, to be able to then create a roadmap. The other piece that we're working on in conjunction with our friends in planning is our update to our capital facility strategic plan. And so it's going to allow us to take this data, because that's what really this is. This is data for us to understand our roadmap, what is our highest priority versus what is our lowest priority. And it's going to allow us to start to figure out that roadmap. So I am really good at negotiation and will likely be able to get us really fair prices to the work. And the most important thing that this is going to do for our team is help us understand the order of priority for us to address and then to problem-solve that with city leadership.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Anne, I think that's a great characterization and usefulness of these numbers. Just keep in mind, I'm going to be asking some very detailed questions when you come for budget proposals.
Thank you. And I'll just jump in actually with a comment and question on that is, you know, just thinking about next steps on using this. So I imagine as we get into budget this year and we're looking at the CIP, are we going to be kind of feeding this data into how we update and prioritize our planning out on that in our six-year plan?
That's a great question. So we have been able to incorporate some of it. It was not finalized before we started doing business cases. That being said, as Quinn alluded to, we have a really good understanding of the highest efficiencies. And so I'll take Fire Station 11, for example. We, Quinn's team really knew some of those highest efficiencies. Some of the numbers that are driving, that, some of the systems that are driving that kind of facilities condition index, we've already identified and put in for a CIP business case for this next cycle. Fire Station 17 already has a project on the books. And some of the public safety building things are also already in the CIP. So while some of these things coming in might seem like news, some of them we've actually known about and have been planning for, we're just kind of hitting them now. But moving forward, this will inform our work, their work on a day-to-day basis as they have opportunity to do some of these smaller items, right? A $5,000 project is not necess, is not a CIP. And so they're able to fit some of those things within their kind of small capital budgets that they work through in the facilities budget. But then it will allow us to inform our six-year CIP and even our longer-term CIS as we work with finance and just look towards the future of our facilities and the community needs in those buildings.
Great, thank you so much. And yeah, that makes a lot of sense. And as we return back to talking about capital facilities, I think it'll be helpful for us as a council to look back when we get into the CIP discussions at this to kind of cross-map of what we're learning here and what we're seeing as investments, as well as some of the things that might be on the horizon that won't show up but that we know are going to be ahead. And we need to really be thinking about how we approach those and get your community on them as well. Any other questions? All right, well, seeing none, thank you so much for the presentation, thank you for the work on this. And we'll look forward to using this data to build out that roadmap and prioritize. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the 2024 Legislative Session Debrief. Amy Tsai, our Chief Policy Advisor, and Brianna Murray, city lobbyist, will introduce this item. Looks like we have Brianna online. Hi, Brianna. I think Amy's just getting set up.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for indulging me and allowing me to participate virtually. I think you all know that after session, I had a medical procedure. And so pleased to share with you all, I'm making a full recovery, but chose to not take on the road time this evening. So appreciate your flexibility.
Glad to have you here, thank you so much. Ms. Tsai?
Good evening, councilmembers. Amy Tsai, Chief Policy Advisor. And as you noted online, we have Brianna Murray, our state lobbyist. Let me go ahead and start by sharing. So we are here today to talk to you about how the legislative session went this session. We are going to start by covering just some of the general themes and trends that were the lay of the land and the environment that we were operating within. And then we're going to give you a summary of the particular city priorities and outcomes of specific funding that we received. And then wrap up with a summary of some particular bills that impact the issue areas that are of greatest interest to all of you. And then touch on next steps for the upcoming session, as it is always an evolving, recurring process. So Brianna, do you want to start by talking about our themes?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Amy. So we shared some of these themes with you in 2023 as you were developing your legislative agenda. So this is a bit of a reminder that the legislative session that just concluded was a short 60-day session. It was the second year of the legislative biennium, which means a lot of the 2023 activities carried over to 2024, including strong Democrat majorities in both chambers. The primary tasks that the legislature was faced with was developing their mid-biennial supplemental budgets or making amendments to the budgets that they adopted in 2023. All bills from the 2023 session that were not enacted into law carried over for consideration during the 2024 session. And then new bills could also be introduced. I would say we had, we saw as a result of that, over 3,000 different bills under consideration during the short 60-day session. There were six initiatives to the legislature that were filed by the, by the public. There, of those six, the legislature chose to enact three of them and allow three of them to go to the ballot. So the three that they enacted are prohibiting state and local income taxes, increasing parental rights around K through 12 education, and altering the scenarios when police officers can engage in vehicular pursuits. And then for the three that they did not take action on, that will forward on to the November ballot, it's Initiative 2117, repealing the Climate Commitment Act, Initiative 2109, repealing the capital gains tax, and Initiative 2124, allowing individuals to opt out of the Washington Long-Term Care Program. I would say those six initiatives took a lot of air out of the room, took a lot of energy amongst legislators, and was probably the biggest action that we saw this, this, during the 20, during the 60-day legislative session. The other theme was that we saw a lot of very bold proposals introduced for a short 60-day session, like rent caps, real estate excise tax increase, changes to property tax levy growth, mandates around transit-oriented development, and more. But in almost all issue areas, the legislature, rather than taking the bold proposal route, chose to enact a modest proposal. This is consistent with historic trends for short 60-day sessions that precede the election season. So not too surprising that that's the direction that the legislature went. It's consistent with, with past history. So as I mentioned, we're moving into election season. All members of the House of Representatives will be on the November ballot for reelection and half the members of the Senate. The, we did see a large number of legislators announce their retirement or that they're choosing not to seek reelection, which means regardless of political balance changes, we are going to likely see a lot of new faces and new constituting of committee members, chairs, and whatnot. And as I noted earlier, there will be three initiatives on the ballot. Many of, as you'll see throughout the presentation, a lot of the legislature's actions are, in the supplemental budgets are contingent on what occurs during the, what occurs with those initiatives. So if the voters approve the initiatives and like their Climate Commitment Act is repealed, then some of the investments made with the funds from that act are not likely to be funded. So those are some of the major themes from this session. And I am going to turn it back over to Amy to talk about your specific priorities.
Thanks, Brianna. So we start the session with the approved state legislative agenda and the particular asks and areas that are priority interest to you. And here is just a sample of that whirlwind 60 days. And, you know, how the city gets involved, how you all get involved. I want to really thank you for those of you who were able, who were able to participate. We have here, we had kicked off the legislative session with a welcoming event for our state delegation. And special thank you to the fire department for hosting in their bay at Fire Station 11. And it really gave us a chance to showcase the priority ask that we had from our departments, the specific funding projects that we were hoping to achieve. the specific funding projects that we were hoping to achieve, and put them in a nice thematic context, just the very building they were in was a reminder of what the priority was and letting them really experience that. So that was a nice way to kick off the session. And then a lot of activity mid-session as you all journeyed down there for AWC, the Association of Washington City's City Action Days. So just a lot of chance to collaborate and have hands-on interaction, both with the legislators and also with your fellow other city elected officials. And so it's just a good reminder that a lot of the themes through session, we have our specific asks, but we're also there as one of many cities with a unified voice trying to achieve common objectives. For our priorities, there were four main outcomes that were very Redmond-specific. So first, I'm going to talk about the Idlewood Park Ask. We had a request for an electric fire engine. We had our 148th Bike Ped Overpass Project, and then Plymouth Housing Project also made an appearance this session. For Idlewood, here I have a technical schematic of what the park looks like, complete with the ADA accessible, the only municipal park with waterfront access. And you can see there the technical rendition of the ADA accessible dock, the only one in the municipality. Just a wonderful place to play, but in heavy need of better parking and better access. And so the request was a modest one this year for $500,000 to support it. The actual project is a $4 million project due to the extensive nature of the expansion and surfacing that is needed. And we were able to successfully achieve $215,000. And this was one that Rep. Wallen and Senator Dingra led the ask for, so special thank you there, and to all of our delegation who supported this request. And so as Brianna noted, it was a short session, and so getting a win in a short session was, we were very thrilled with this. We also continued seeking funding for our electric fire engine, looking forward to welcoming the very first electric fire engine in the entire state of Washington. So that is a really great feather in Redmond's cap. We have been embarking on this journey with Bellevue throughout because they're also shortly after going to also be expecting their first electric engine. And so we have been partnering with them on funding requests, and so this was no exception. So this session, we were looking for a joint request, of which a portion would be allocated to our remaining needs for funding the engine and the associated charging infrastructure. This is, as Brianna noted, the initiatives were looming large. This is one of those examples where funding is contingent on the survival of the Climate Commitment Act. For the 148th Bike Ped Overpass, this is an interesting one. The legislature had appropriated 8 million back in 2022 as part of the Move Ahead Washington package, but they hadn't said how that money would be spent and when. And so last year, if you recall, what they had done was they had allocated the award to future biennia in the out years. So our priority this session was to maintain that funding. Please don't let it slip further. Keep it on your radar. We still appreciate your support and funding. So what the legislature did this session was they actually went back to what we had requested the previous session, which was to allocate $750,000 in this next biennium and then spread out the remainder of the 8 million over the next several years through 2029. So definitely have achieved success there in maintaining that. I will say that as we head into that next session, this is contingent on the Climate Commitment Act. And so like the other funding, we don't necessarily know our status until after the elections in November. And one thing we're going to be doing staff-side is to take a look at this entire project and the corridor and how the bike ped opportunities have evolved in this area. For instance, we have the Overlake Bridge, we have the RTS Bridge, a lot of movement coming into this area and updating this project and looking at the efficiencies to be achieved in this area. So more to come on this one. And then lastly, but not least, during the mid-session, we had an opportunity to relocate 100 units of permanent supportive housing to Redmond. And this was something where in order to have the funding, it needed to be re-appropriated from its original location in Kenmore. And so there was both the need to transfer that funding to Redmond, and also there had been federal funding that was not going to be transferable. And so in this situation, the state stepped up, and they provided both the original amount that had gone to the other city originally and also made up the difference on the federal funding piece that was needed. And so the total award on the state and federal funding side was 7.4 million. So definitely one of the bigger wins of our session. And so with that, Brianna, I will turn it over to you to cover some specific bills of interest.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Amy. And we, you know, we develop a very focused legislative agenda that Amy just reviewed that has sort of our top funding requests that we work on very diligently with our legislative delegation to achieve success. But you all also provide guidance on a whole series of other policy issues that direct our engagement. And so I'm going to go through the many other issues that we weighed in on throughout the legislative process, either through monitoring, having staff review, participating in stakeholder meetings, weighing in at hearings. Some of this we weighed in on, some of it we monitored, but I'm going to just sort of go through and let you know where things landed in each of these subject areas. I would note that Redmond is increasingly developing a reputation as being a strong regional partner and bringing solutions to the state level. And I think the time and effort that staff has dedicated to reviewing a lot of different bills and providing very thoughtful feedback is really paying off, and our, the city's influence in these subject areas is growing. So first, under housing, as I mentioned earlier, we saw a lot of bold proposals in the housing space, including proposals that would cap rent increases or increase the real estate excise tax to develop or create a revenue stream for affordable housing. Both of those proposals received robust discussion, but at the end of the day, did not pass into law. Instead, the legislature allocated $127 million to the Housing Trust Fund, which is, remember, this is a biennial budget, so it is in addition to the rather sizable investment that they made in 2023, and a very significant investment given supplemental budget resources. The legislature also had a very robust discussion around the citing, local government citing, local government regulations and ordinances around permanent supportive housing and emergency shelter. We saw two different bills introduced on that subject, and it's a subject that I expect the legislature to take up in the 2025 session. I think overall, the legislature is grappling with how to both honor local control while at the same time ensure that permanent supportive housing and emergency shelter projects have some reliability around where they can be located. Another proposal that the city engaged on was Senate Bill 6175, which is the conversion of commercial tax incentive to convert commercial buildings into residential buildings. This is a local option tool that you all have available to you to choose to implement if you desire. It is twofold. It can both be integrated into your MFTE program and/or be used as a state and local sales and use tax deferral program for any commercial building projects that are converted to residential, and then a certain percentage of the units are dedicated to affordability. On transit-oriented development proposals, we saw a bill get introduced by Representative Reed, House Bill 2160, and receive a great deal of discussion. The city provided feedback into refining that proposal and worked with Rep. Reed very closely on those refinements. At the end of the day, her bill did not pass into law, and instead, the transportation budget includes a study around transit-oriented development policies in the Puget Sound region. The outcome of that study will likely then lead to any future legislative efforts. Similarly, the legislature considered a bill that would create a separate Department of Housing at the state level. Right now, all housing policy is within the State Department of Commerce. The bill creating, that would have prompted this separate state agency, did not pass into law, but instead, the budgets do include direction to the Office of Financial Management to explore and identify initial steps around creating a Department of Housing. Moving on from housing to environmental sustainability, as you might imagine, Initiative 2117, repealing the Climate Commitment Act, was the center of attention in the environmental space. And how to, because of the initiative, the legislature could not or was limited in the ability to make changes to the Climate Commitment Act this session, as any changes to the Climate Commitment Act could be perceived as an alternative to the initiative that would then appear on the ballot alongside the initiative. Once the legislature decided they did not want to put an alternative forward, they simply wanted the initiative to proceed to the ballot, and that limited how much amending they could do to the Climate Commitment Act. However, one of the spaces that they were able to take action was in providing direction to Department of Ecology and the state to pursue linkage of the state's Climate Commitment Act with California and Quebec. That will be a multi-year effort. It's not something that will occur overnight, but the agency does now have direction from the legislature to pursue that action. In addition to the Climate Commitment Act, the legislature did make several different investments in the environmental sustainability space. They advanced significant policy sponsored by Representative Tonason around zero emissions school buses, and the transportation budget included significant funding for vouchers for medium and heavy-duty vehicles. There was $14.5 million included for facility decarbonization grants. I call those out specifically because local governments are eligible to receive those grants and is an area where Redmond could specifically benefit if there's an appropriate project. One of the disappointing components in the environmental sustainability space was the failure of the Rerapped Act to pass into law. This is the environmental product stewardship proposal that the city's been actively supporting for several legislative sessions. The effort for a 2025 bill has already started. I do have stakeholder meetings on my calendar starting next week to begin looking at what that looks like, on how to get that across the finish line in 2025. Next slide. On planning, and I'll speed it up here. I know you all care a great deal about housing and environmental sustainability, so I put a little extra emphasis, but we'll speed up on these. For planning and infrastructure, the primary takeaways were that there's a study that's been fed in the budget on how to integrate special purpose districts into the Growth Management Act. Cities, including Redmond, have been articulating a workforce shortage in the planning and infrastructure space around permitting and long-range planning. The legislature did provide some permitting workforce enhancements to assist with that. There was very limited transportation funding made available. However, one of the areas that the legislature took action to assist cities was to make changes around automated traffic safety cameras. For those communities that have automated traffic safety cameras, authority was expanded. And for those communities that do not have automated traffic safety cameras, they changed the split in revenue from those cameras and how it would be divided between the state and local level to make it entirely at the local level to incentivize more jurisdictions to institute that technology. In broader general government, there was a lot of discussion around changes to the property tax levy, growth limits, but those did not pass into law. Similarly, we saw several proposals introduced and discussed, providing assistance to jurisdictions to manage public records, but those did not pass. Two notable general government bills that did pass were House Bill 2044, which removes the non-suppliant language on all property tax levies located in King County, and House Bill 2209, which creates the Lunar New Year holiday. It is not an official state holiday in that you get the day off, but it is officially state-recognized holiday now. On community vitality, Senate Bill 6038 provided a BNO tax to childcare facilities. There was $660 million in behavioral health investments and many more behavioral health policies advanced forward. And notably, Senate Bill 5853, which is the 24-hour crisis facility model we saw in the 2023 session that was spearheaded by Senator Dingra, was expanded to include juveniles. On the public safety front, the most notable item is Initiative 2113, making the change to vehicular pursuit laws. The legislature also loosened up laws and regulations around law enforcement hiring to allow law enforcement officers to work part-time for law enforcement agencies to hire DACA residents, lawful permanent residents, and just some loosening in hiring in some places there. The legislature's most significant firearm reform was around Senate Bill 5444, which bans firearms in zoos, public libraries, and transit stations. And the legislature made a concerted effort to respond to the opioid crisis by focusing a lot of policy on public outreach and education and expanding access to Narcan. And I think that is a brief summary of all the items in your policy document. I hope you found the weekly reports helpful in tracking all of those many issues throughout the legislative process, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Back to you, Amy.
Thank you. And then looking ahead towards 2025, we are planning on coming back to you in early September with a new study session as we think through and have departmental suggestions for the priority areas, and always looking at ways to streamline the agenda to make it compelling and a succinct marketing piece for our state delegation to use and read and absorb. And just a final note on the state agenda is my hope is also to continue to have conversations about those partnerships, because I think there are these themes that come through, and it's always a struggle of where all the cities fall out when they're in different positions, but even between the city and the county, there are some shared interests and rates and utilities and things that impact all of us, and so I think it's worth taking a look at those. And so going to take a holistic look and then try to distill all that holistic stuff down to a manageable document for you for session.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Are there questions from the council? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Not really a question, just a comment. Thank you both for all the hard work and through the last session, some amazing wins, some big disappointments as well. But I do enjoy reading those weekly reports and getting the updates that way. And Brianna, I'm glad that you are doing well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I'll add my kudos to Team Redmond, and it was really nice to hear, Brianna, you referenced the reputation that Redmond is gaining, and that is in no small part thanks to you and Amy and everyone who's involved. And I also want to shout out the participatory activities that you all led on this year through the session, being down at the fire station, not sitting in a conference room, being down for the dinner and whatnot. So thank you so much for the opportunities. I just wanted to maybe start where Amy left off with the development of the next agenda. There's a lot we won't know in September at our next study session. So if we, could we help set expectations a little bit for how we'll approach that? AWC and SCA both saying it's likely to be a big transportation year, but we won't know the outcome, especially of Initiative 2117. So how will you go about thinking about the recommendations that you bring to the council in terms of what are the requests we might take to the legislature?
That's a great question, one that's a recurring one. And I think lessons learned from last year and that I'm hoping to take forward is, a really key part of that is getting the input of the departments early. And so we're continually trying to push up that timeline. Excuse me, it just, part of the reality of September is by the time you get all that feedback together, this is where it's shaking out, but to the extent we can push that September even earlier, I'm going to be seeing if we can do that. So part of it is, these projects, they need to be identified in time to be fully vetted. And so I'm trying to leave enough space for that to happen, and so we have a timeline with the departments to be trying to take a look at the viable projects as quickly after the development of the CIP proposals as possible. So I think part of the answer is early and often, and I think, you know, you are sitting on the AWC Legislative Committee, and I think there's going to be some opportunities to be listening to see what be listening to see what are the themes others are spotting. And so, definitely a little bit of not reinventing the wheel, but seeing where some of those things are trending and having that opportunity to have discussion on those key themes.
Wonderful. I appreciate that, and I appreciated your comments too on the project around 148th. Just, we can come back to this, but early and often with neighbors also on these projects. So, even since, I'm going to call them the Green Bridge and the White Bridge. We just opened the White Bridge across 520 yesterday. The green one's been open for a while now, and I am hearing positive feedback about the comfort that that creates for bike commuters to get to and from groceries from 148th. My last question, really, Brianna, we also, this council has quite a bit of an interest in behavioral health. Could you say just a little bit more about this $660 million and how we might eventually see the impact of those investments in cities like ours?
Yeah, I'm not sure I can offer you a full breakdown of the $660 million, but in general, a bulk of that money went to a new state facility, a new state behavioral health facility, and the operations of new beds within that facility. There was also a portion of the funding went toward expanding beds at Western State Hospital and Eastern State Hospital and trying to build out more capacity there. As far as, you know, neck, I think one of the biggest challenges with behavioral health is there's such a strong interest at the city level to see success there, and yet the city doesn't play a formal role in the behavioral health process. And so, what I expect you all to see more work on in implementing this year's dollars, but also future efforts, is in connection with the Behavioral Health, BHASO's Behavioral Health Regional Organizations, and the Department of Social and Human Services, which are really the agencies tasked with building out the behavioral health system. I'll also note that part of that $660 million was paying the True Blood penalty, the $100 million True Blood penalty that the state had incurred. So, I think the end-of-session report that you all received included a pretty detailed breakdown on the $660 million. I just don't have it off the top of my head.
Great. Thank you so much.
On your previous question, Councilmember Stewart, I would just note that it is much easier to remove an item from the legislative agenda on the November outcome, November election outcome, than it is to add something in November at the last minute that hasn't been vetted. So, I think in a way, the timeline that's been outlined allows us to bring to you a legislative agenda that can then be modified based on how the political climate evolves, but it's much harder to add something late than it is to remove something.
That is super tactical. Thank you, Brianna.
Thanks. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. Two questions. The first, when I read the words opioid response focuses on public outreach and education, I'm pretty underwhelmed by that statement. It seems like a pretty anemic thing to say, sort of coming back to Councilmember Stewart's question about how behavioral health investments. So, can you describe or maybe refer me to something of more substance about what the state opioid response is? And then I'll just give you my second question. Did we go out for bid on those schematics for Idlewood Park?
Let Amy answer the schematics question first.
On the Idlewood Park, I don't know. If that is a technical question, we can find out for you, but I think they're still in design.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. For those, that was a paid endeavor, so they have been appropriately compensated.
Okay, great. I just.
And I will just say that it was within the ethical limits, but the emotional cost to me personally was extremely great.
Got it.
But thank you for your interest.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thank you.
And on, Brianna, you may be speaking to the opioid response more specifically, but in our weekly wrap-up summary, there are some specific ones on page 18, but those really are education outreach. So, Brianna, I don't know if you have anything to add further on where real differences and additional substantive beyond the education outreach component might live in the state budget?
Yeah, so there were several things in the state budget. I'm pulling them up now, but I will say, Councilmember, the criticism that you're offering about whether or not the opioid investments were truly robust is one that has been a common refrain by critics of the majority party. And so, I don't know that there's an answer to fully satisfy you, as it's something that has been criticized of the 2024 legislature. So, I think when we talk about outreach and education, so there were three different bills that passed into law around education. So, Senate Bill 5804 requires all schools to carry one set of opioid overdose reversal medication and then adopt related policies associated with the use of that medication. That bill was sponsored by Senator Kuter, one of your own legislators, and $745,000 was allocated to the Department of Health to purchase naloxone and fentanyl strips to be distributed to K-12 education facilities. House Bill 2112 is another bill in that same vein that was focused on higher education institutions, essentially the same idea, education, naloxone, and fentanyl testing strips, and funding associated with those higher education institutions. Senate Bill 5906, sponsored by Senator Linda Wilson, also passed. It required the Department of Health to develop an ongoing drug overdose campaign and to conduct a feasibility study for an opioid prevention hotline, and funding was allocated to implement that bill. House Bill 1956 was sponsored by Representative Mari Lovett. It directed the Secretary of Health to develop, implement, and maintain statewide drug overdose prevention awareness campaign, and then directed OSPI to also develop, update, and distribute substance use prevention and awareness materials. So, those bills were what I was referring to on the bullet on the slide. In addition to those, there's, I would say, a series of minor investments associated with opioid epidemic. $4 million was allocated to community providers to increase opioid treatment programs. $900,000 was allocated for naloxone, fentanyl test strips, and other public health supplies to be distributed through vending machines. Let's see here, there's another $1.5 million allocated to a high-intensity, community-based team serving people with opioid disorder. And then there's a series of street medicine teams that are a combination of trying to combat the opioid epidemic as well as homelessness. That's $5 million, but it's allocated to specific jurisdictions. I can keep going, but I've covered the highlights.
Thank you. Thank you. And in listening to your response, and I appreciate it, I do, it almost seems like there is an opportunity for our legislators to be educated as well on some of these programs. So, there's going to be some information gathered to give a sense of what we do next, what the size of the problem actually is, and how to approach the crisis. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salah Houdin?
Yeah, thank you. And so, my question was actually going to be on that line as well on opioid response, so I really appreciate that detail there, and I guess sort of like a subset of that question. I was looking at House Bill 1956, specific to OSPI and the statewide campaign, and I know that that's, you know, within the school districts and under a different jurisdiction, but in a similar vein, I was wondering, are there opportunities in a statewide campaign or potentially, you know, other things that have come up in session for cities or local jurisdictions to get involved in substance use prevention and awareness campaigns?
Yeah, so, the budget did include some funding for specific health districts to try some different tactics around opioid education. I would say that typically, that type of public outreach does occur more through the health district rather than through city government. I do not know what King County Health District is doing in that space, but just know that that is the usual conduit for that education.
Thank you.
Not seeing other questions. I'll just jump in to say, first of all, thank you so much for all of your work and to all of our staff who did work throughout session on many of the bills that we were tracking and asks. I think a lot of other cities would be pretty jealous of some of the outcomes that we got in terms of appropriations to our city, you know, pending repeal of the Climate Commitment Act. But really, just, yeah, want to, first of all, say kudos and thank you to you all for your really hard work to get those outcomes. I wanted to follow up and just also to share my perspective on the update to how we did our, oops, to how we did our activities this session. I thought the innovation to have us do dinners and breakfasts and other types of gatherings with our legislators to talk about different issues was really effective, and I think when we circle back in September, that'll be a great time to also discuss again, you know, how we want to do that, but I'll definitely be supportive of us doing a similar type of thing. And thanks in particular to Brianna for hosting us at her house for some of those events. That was really nice. I was disappointed that we didn't see the Rerap Act advance, but hearing that there's already planning going on, I think it was great that we, as a city, could really show up strongly for that, and I hope that in our upcoming legislative efforts that we can keep that on our agenda, especially bringing the city perspective on how that helps us to advance our city goals.
Any other questions? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I just had two questions that are sort of maybe speculation, but I'm really curious if you can give sort of a temperature on what the likelihood of repeal is for the Climate Commitment Act? Like, what are we, are we worried?
I would say yes. If, I mean, are you worried? I guess it depends on your perspective, but Councilmember, I'm assuming you would like to see it not repealed. I would say yes, there's, and I would make that statement based on the fact that there is a lot of financial resources going into both sides of the campaign, and financial resources on a campaign have a significant amount of impact. I'd also say that the price of fuel is likely to have an impact on what occurs in November, and that talking point is being used by the proponents of the initiative very, very strongly, regardless of whether it's accurate or not. So, yeah, I think it's worth being worried about. I could not tell you the outcome of either that initiative or the other two. I think it will, both that as well as the other items on the November ballot, the state legislative and statewide elections will be indicative of where Washington State is at politically.
Do you think we'll see a poll on that from you between now and the election? Just curious.
Yeah, unfortunately, so to do a poll is an incredibly expensive endeavor, so that, you know, launching a statewide poll from our firm is not something we would undertake.
Sure.
If another, if one of the campaigns does a poll, or if a separate interest group does a poll and it is circulated publicly, it is something that I usually get my hands on and certainly would forward it along, but absent another entity doing a poll, I wouldn't have access to that type of data.
Great. And so, we would hear that from you if it exists. Is that correct?
If it exists, and if I'm so honored and privileged to have access to it, which I would hope, I would hope so. Usually, I see those.
Great. And then my next question is actually, I thought it was interesting about the Housing Department, and just another speculative question. Do you think other cities with significant homeless crisis issues will also follow suit if the state establishes a department?
Oh, that's an interesting question. I don't know. I know there are many cities that are very supportive of the state creating a separate Department of Housing. I would say, overall, it is unclear for some cities what their role is in relation to housing, and I think there's a, I think cities in Washington State are evolving. So, whereas previously, the city's role in housing was issuing a permit and making land use changes, that is beginning to evolve to a more proactive role, where it's not just making land use changes and issuing permits, it's also generating funding, creating tax exemptions, tax incentives, utilizing other policy mechanisms at your disposal to bring about housing. And I think the cities of Washington State find themselves in varying places along that spectrum and along that journey, with those cities in the Puget Sound region being the furthest along.
Great. I appreciate that feedback. I guess my perspective on that would be, it seems like an opportunity for cities to capture some of those funds coming from the state level in a more clearly-directed way. I'm not sure if Redmond has considered that, but it's something that I would be supportive of. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Thank you, Brianna, for being here. The question that I had was around the $650 million, that $100 million went to the True Blood settlement, just for the listening public. Can you just very at high level describe what that True Blood case slash now settlement is?
Oh, yes, I can. I will try and put it in layman's terms, but so, essentially, the state was sued for not providing a speedy trial for those individuals who had been deemed incompetent. And so, when an individual going through the criminal justice system is deemed to not be fit to sit for trial, they can either be competently restored, or they can be held in perpetuity if the assessment of them is that they are not able to be competently restored. And so, these are individuals that find themselves in the behavioral health system within Western State Hospital. The state received that lawsuit, rather than litigating it, entered into a settlement agreement with the plaintiffs to make overarching improvements to the state's behavioral health system that would benefit the population that was being brought forward, which is those that are unable to stand trial, but also improving the behavioral health system overall. The court continues to have jurisdiction over that case, and in 2023, the court evaluated the efforts that the state had made in order to comply with the settlement and found that they had been inadequate and issued them a fine. And so, the state paid that fine and then also made significant investments, as I mentioned, in creating a new behavioral health facility and adding beds at Western State Hospital and Eastern State Hospital. And if anyone on council has a better or improved or corrected version, I welcome it, is my, off the top of my head explanation, and I'm happy to send more information in writing.
That was fabulous. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you so much for all these updates. I forgot to add one myself, which I didn't see on here listed some of the wins around salmon recovery, but I will note that via the Wyra 8, the agenda that we supported, a lot of those efforts were funded, although almost all of the funding that went towards things like the Salmon Recovery Funding Board and the Asterian Salmon Restoration Program, et cetera, were all also tied with dollars from the Climate Commitment Act, so things to look at as well that I know are on our priorities list. So, seeing no other questions, I think we'll wrap up here, say thank you, and look forward to seeing you back in September for us to look towards the next long legislative session.
Sounds great. And in the meantime, if you have legislative ideas for 2025, please do not wait to pass those along to our team.
Great. Thank you so much. And in case I didn't say it, thank you so much to our legislators in the 48th and in the 45th Legislative District. the 45th Legislative District. We have a really wonderful delegation who really fought hard this session for a lot of our priorities. The next item on our agenda is the status update of the implementation of the Transportation Benefit District and Walkway Condition Monitoring Program. Erin Burt, our Public Works Director, will introduce this item, and we also have Van G. Garcia as well, our Deputy Public Works Director. Go ahead, Ms. Garcia, when you're ready. I did a quick transition, so we'll give you a moment. And I think after this item, council, we'll take a quick break, just so you know, in case you're wondering. And so, we have a lot of items on the agenda tonight, but I thought we'd just keep going since we got some great momentum. Go ahead, Ms. Garcia.
Good evening. Good evening, council leadership and council members. Today, I am joined by Tristan Osborne, if you don't know him already, the Fleet and Streets Maintenance and Operation Manager, to provide a quick status update on the Transportation Benefit District that was adopted by council last year. I will provide a quick background and overview of the actions the city has done, and then hand the presentation over to Tristan on how we're moving forward with implementation. As a review, Transportation Benefit District is a funding entity that cities and counties can form to raise revenue for transportation improvements, usually through vehicle license fees or sales taxes. Redmond's TBD was adopted into code last year. The recommendation to create a TBD began in 2022 after a presentation on pavement management practices and delayed maintenance needs. The 2023-2028 CIP included projects anticipating the formation of a TBD. The TBD was formally established in spring of 2023, and the staffing and programming elements were approved later in the year. With the assessment of 1/10 of 1% sales tax, the TBD is estimated to bring in 5.5 million annually in revenue, starting in January of this year. Current CIP projects funded by the TBD are Avondale paving between 90th and Navette Hill Road, and Northeast 24th Street paving between West Lake Mamish Parkway to 172nd. The staffing component included a concrete crew consisting of a supervisor, a lead maintenance technician, and four maintenance technicians, as well as partially funding to finance staff and partially funding an administrative supervisor in the department. Other expenditures for 2024 included supplies, tools, equipment, and vehicles, and $550,000 has been set aside for programmatic work for 2024. Prioritizing needed investment is identified in the community strategic plan in many ways. In addition to the CIP projects identified for pavement management, the work to be done by the TBD could extend limits to existing projects to provide greater benefit, like repairing damaged sidewalks, fixing deficient ADA concrete ramps. According to Director Cochran, the TBD fund has received 350,000 thus far, and just so you know, sales tax revenue lags by two months, so this is what we've received in January only, and that we received that at the end of March. This is on target with a forecasted revenue of 445,000 per month, knowing that January was expected to be low, and this is expected to go up and down throughout the year. The city will receive the second allocation of the TBD revenues at the end of this month, and Director Cochran will include this in her report of updated revenues at FAC. In the fall of last year, an online survey was conducted for public feedback, asking to rank the priorities in how the TBD funds can be used. The lower the number, the higher the priority, and on the chart in the presentation is how the ranks were showed. Something that was currently underway for the last couple of years was an effort to document sidewalk conditions and map distresses such as uplift and cracks in the existing sidewalks. Historically, the work to document these conditions was done by individual staff noting data in worksheets or tables. And interestingly enough, Tristan was one of the staff. The work to transfer the data from worksheets, maps, and tables to GIS can be very time-consuming and labor-intensive. Public Works contracted with StreetScan or StreetLogix, which is the platform, to use their high-resolution imaging technology to collect sidewalk data and video. The data collected identifies sidewalk distresses such as cracks, tripping hazards, surface distortions, and uplifts. The concrete team will be responsible for validating the data in the field and using the StreetScan interface to prioritize and inform where to focus their work. Tristan, we'll do a quick demo of what the StreetScan platform can do.
Yeah, good evening, council. Let me stop sharing this and get to our demo here. All right, so what you're looking at here is the StreetLogix software that we are going to be using with the concrete crew that's starting up here shortly. So, we contracted with StreetScan, and they came in on these little carts that were equipped with imagery devices, video capture devices, and so they were in monitoring all sorts of tripping hazards, uplifts, any sort of issues that may be in the sidewalk path or ADA kind of impacts. So, this is kind of the overview. It gives us a high-level overview of the sidewalk condition. And one of the beneficial things that you can kind of see with this is it mimics kind of a PCI scale. So, it's a zero to 100, 100 being the best, zero being nothing. So, you get kind of that similar condition, you know, view.
PCI is Pavement Condition Index.
What's that?
For folks at home, Pavement Condition Index, right?
Sorry, yeah. So, in addition to the Sidewalk Condition Index, it gives us a view of all of the different distresses that make up the sidewalk condition. So, as we zoom in here, you can see it's a very robust layer that shows all of the different types of cracks, distortions, lifts, and as well as severity, so from minor to extreme. To allow us to really dive into the data from a maintenance perspective, you know, the Sidewalk Condition Index is good for a high-level view, but this really gives us the detail to know what's causing the issue. And, you know, for showing the, I'll pop this back on and kind of show the view that we get as well in kind of the dashboard, is so we can click on a segment and actually view, you know, its length, what is the surface type, what is the area. It gives us an estimated cost that we're still working through validating some of this data to make sure that that's correct, the width, and then there's also, it gives us a maintenance suggestion for most of the path. In addition, like I said, there's a video that we get of each little segment to be able to validate whether or not the distresses are true or not, and then it links us to a Google Map so we can verify it. So, being able to leverage this from the customer service side through Q Alerts as Q Alerts are coming in, we can quickly jump to a section and validate that request much quicker now than sending crews out in person. I mean, we'll still do that, but this is a quick, let's verify that that's true and ask additional questions as needed. And so, there's some other layers that are interesting. They captured some missing panels, so missing sidewalk segments. And so, one that I felt was worth pointing out is this little dot up here popped up, and if we click on the section, this is really good for identifying these little things where we have kind of a brand-new neighborhood, abutting a little bit older of a neighborhood in this little gap. And so, I think this is the perfect kind of example of what this concrete crew could come in and handle and fix this connection and make it a connected pathway. So, that's kind of the high-level overview of the system, and it's a brand-new tool that we're excited about, to be able to document all of these issues in one comprehensive system and keep track of all of the prepares that we're making and feed it back into the system to keep that overall condition index number current.
And as Tristan gets back to our presentation, when, as this concrete crew gets on board, we can use the StreetScan interface to help prioritize needs, and it has a lot more capabilities with budgeting and long-term planning. I want to go to the next slide. And we will go to the next slide in a second. There we go.
Oh, so this is a look at the roadmap that we have for the concrete crew that's funded within the TBD. So, right now, where we're sitting is, we're at the recruitment process for the crew. We're actively recruiting right now for the supervisor, lead, and maintenance techs. And once those are filled within the next month or so, we'll be moving into kind of our, immediately starting kind of our branding strategy, thinking about our communication plans, our long-term planning and mapping that will get sent out to the community about what projects are on the books for that year, and then, you know, yard signage and things like that, a way to brand and make people know, they know that we're coming and they know where their dollars are being put. And then moving in past, kind of, in the next couple of months, we're going to be moving into quickly training and really getting out into the field. So, we anticipate that field work starting here this summer, so pretty quick.
Next slide. So, the key is, the current status is that we're continuing work on the existing projects, and the recruitments are happening fast and furious, but once they are onboard, we'll be updating the StreetScan data, and you will see people in the field filling missing gaps and working on all the missing pieces that we've been getting Q Alerts for. So, that's the end of our presentation, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for the presentation and the really cool demo. Questions from the council? Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks so much, yeah, really do appreciate the demo. And it struck me during the demo that council has been recently having a conversation with some of the other directors about the need for a data governance strategy here in the city of Redmond. It seems to me like that's a conversation that applies here, too. Am I correct that the concrete crew, then, is six FTE? Is that right? Okay. And again, as the slides mention, I'm asking this because I get, I hear confusion in communities, so I want to help clarify for all of us so that we can be good messengers. So, the Transportation Benefit District, as it was mentioned, Van G, on your slide, it was pitched to the council as a tool to help improve the Pavement Condition Index, which had been worsening over time due to benign neglect. Now, we have seen data tonight on both the Pavement Condition Index, meaning the roads that mostly cars and sometimes bicycles are driving on, as well as the Sidewalk Condition Index. Funds from the TBD can be used for both. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are there other things that the TBD dollars can be spent on?
The way it is written, the code is written, is that we can use it for transportation improvements.
Great. Thank you. That's a super helpful succinct answer. So, my last question, then, is more just to make sure I understood correctly. Since we have the StreetScan data and you're looking at telling the story of where the crew is going, we heard most recently about the soon-to-becoming public-facing dashboard for, or map, rather, about where the snowplow might be headed next in the event of an inclement weather event or a winter weather event. I wonder if this is a branding opportunity for the concrete crew, where is the concrete crew headed next? And particularly with that equipment that we recently purchased with the crack filler, the sealer, I'm not getting the title of that machine right, but it was very exciting when we got it here in the city of Redmond. So, where it's going next and if it's coming to your neighborhood to solve the problem in your neighborhood. I really feel like a lot of the, literally where the rubber meets the road, if you'll allow, for our neighbors is right here in this work. So, just an opportunity, something to think about. Thanks so much.
Other comments, questions? Councilmember Noeva Camina.
Thank you. Just clarifying for folks listening, there's a lot of things that we will contract out, and we are talking about adding six FTEs and why we are having in-house FTEs instead of contracting this out.
Well, we can get a lot of, when we have to do a big CIP project, a capital improvement project, there is a lot of process with getting it on the six-year CIP and a lot of planning in place. We have a long list of projects, and sometimes a public, a certain person in the public might be walking along and see a little piece of sidewalk missing gap. And the use of StreetScan, we can prioritize all these little pieces, and I can't remember if it was Tristan who mentioned that sometimes these little pieces don't constitute a large capital project that has to go through these processes. But we do need to prioritize all these needs sometimes. Where are they, where are the greatest needs first? Because all these needs need to be addressed. And so, this is a way to, and that's why we wanted to show you what we have. There is a lot. If Tristan wanted to show you the whole city, it can be somewhat overwhelming, and we are very fortunate to have a crew now, and once we get them fully staffed, we're going to be moving, and they're going to be moving very fast.
Thank you for that, because I'm sure that folks will appreciate understanding kind of, when we contract something out and when we don't, because often we talk about, you know, what vendors are bidding for what. So, this gives a bit of clarity, and also, I'm sure that everyone is going to be looking forward to being a bit nimble.
And there are, there's contracting rules, by the way, that the city can't just take on everything, and we have to contract out.
Thank you.
Council Base President Forsyth.
Thank you. This is pretty exciting that we finally can start to see these dollars get put to use, and the new tool that you have access to is super cool. I'm probably not the only one sitting here that really just wanted to be like, can you give us the access? Because I'm pretty sure we would all geek out over that. Interested to hear from your perspective how much, we saw a lot of fixes that need to be made, and your best guess, how much do you think we can accomplish this summer on these projects?
How did I know we would get this question?
I do know that I will be asked this from a community member who I know will be very excited to see this information, so.
You know, the key is, to me, and Tristan actually probably will be the better one to answer this, we've had issues with equipment being received. So, I mean, as I'm just learning this role, I believe we've had to wait quite a bit for the equipment that we've ordered in the, we got funded for in the last budget. But Tristan, you want to answer that one?
Yeah, I would say a safe assumption is, you know, with taking into account all of the training and building this new crew and getting them together and creating the process, you know, we're, I'm really trying to be focused on process and quality first over quantity to make sure that it looks good and first and foremost. But, you know, I think by the end of this year, I think a good goal for this group would, you know, I don't know how you want it quantified as far as like linear feet of sidewalk or something like that, but, you know, we have some good startup projects. sidewalk or something like that, but, you know, we have some good startup projects. You know, we're going to start in kind of the neighborhood areas that are a little quiet, where we don't have as much traffic to deal with, so that they can really focus on that process and quality first. So at the end of the, you know, at the end of the year, I would say we're going to be up in, I hate to commit to anything, but, you know, we're going to, you know, like, you know, I could see close to, you know, five, six to 1,000 feet of sidewalk curbing gutter.
Nice.
You know, depending on, you know, crew and all that, how that all fits together.
I think your answer on process was probably most insightful and helpful in that, and especially talking about quality over quantity, I think, is going to be resonating with a lot of folks. So thank you.
Tristan is really good at planning the work, as I don't know how many of you know that he was our supervisor in streets for a very long time. So we, as, we have a lot of work going on in our streets, so we have to look at where we have existing CIP projects and where we have development projects, and we want to focus on where we have the greatest amount of lengths of projects that aren't too complicated, because we don't want to cause too much traffic and congestion when we just want to improve access.
Councilmember Fields?
Is there any work that was already funded under other funding that will be folded into the work that you're doing?
From what I understand, the way it was created in the budget was, it was, first it was those pavement management projects first, and then it was the how we were going to, because I was listening to the conversation at first, it was the vehicle tabs, and then we got more money, so it was the what? What are we going to do with the additional funding? Because it was just the pavement projects, and so now it's the, so no, basically.
So those are sitting outside of your purview, sort of, right?
Correct, but it is in the budget.
And I want to do my follow-up question about adaptive signaling.
But that's our, we have the one project that we have funded through the grant in our CIP. The only one that we're waiting for right now is the CFD, the Microsoft funding.
Thanks.
Other comments, questions? All right. Well, yeah, I will just weigh in to say this is really exciting, very cool to see. Now I'm trying to remember my question here. Well, I will just say, yeah, thank you so much. If there are no other questions, we can move on. Oh, I remember now my question quickly, which is just, when can we expect to see you back to report on more of these? I think as we start to implement on this next year, it'd be great to hear back on it, as well as, as you mentioned about using these tools to be able to do a prioritization. It would be very interesting to me to be able to know what the, kind of, where we end up in that prioritization. As you mentioned, kind of, starting in the neighborhoods, I know I hear from some residents in downtown about missing connections, those types of things as well, so that'll be something we'll want to attend to, but also, obviously, we hear from it all over the city. So it will be interesting to see how that prioritization comes back.
As a requirement of having a TBD, we actually have to report to you. So we will be working with the finance department, so Director Cochran, on the reporting, so probably at the end of the year.
Great, well, we'll look forward to that, and thank you so much for your work on this. Excited to hear more about it.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, I think we'll take a five-minute recess. We'll resume at nine o'clock. Thank you, and we are back with the Revon City Council Study Session on April 23, 2024. The next item on our agenda is budget preparation, budgeting for equity. Kelly Cochran, our finance director, will introduce this item. Director Cochran?
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us tonight. Excited to finally be here with you and share the work that we have been pursuing this year. It is a little out of the typical budget lane that I am in, and it feels really fun and exciting. I also have some great partners to help support me and the organization as we start down this path. We're here tonight to explain to you what budgeting for equity is, what it looks like for the city of Redmond, how we picked where we wanted to focus on in, for the upcoming biennium, and what an example of one of the equity action plans that we're working on will look like. So do you ever have those times where you're just starving and you really want something good, and you find a recipe, and then you have all the ingredients, and you don't burn it and all the other stuff that has to come after that? That's how I felt when I read an article, Budgeting for Equity, written by GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, and I will share it with you. This presentation comes largely from it, as well does our handout, but it really brings together all of the things that we have in motion, all of the things that you have declared a commitment to, and puts it in a structure or a lens on top of our budget that allows us to look at what we do through an equity lens and make decisions on that. So it's an additional sort of strategic thinking lens for considering equity. What we're after is on the far right. I see a lot of people that might get hit by a ball, but we are after liberation. We are after access for everyone, no barriers to services, no barriers to programs, that in the city of Redmond, everyone is equitable, and all of what we do is available to everyone. This is important for a lot of different ways, but one of the most important things for me is that our budget is what drives what we do. It's how local governments make commitments, make allocations, it's basically your work plan, and it's a great place for this type of work to come together. We also, all of us at this table, have an ethical duty as budget officials to put together a budget that is fair and equitable, and this gives us a way to be able to speak to what we're doing towards that, where we are, and what is coming next. So for budgeting for equity, we have objectives. They, we have similar, not the same, but similar objectives for budgeting by priorities. It helps to guide what we do, make sure everyone is on the same page, taking the same approach. These objectives may, and I expect will, grow and change as what we do grows and changes. We learn every time we do budgeting by priorities. I expect that we will do every time that we do this. For now, this is where we are at, just working on getting this off the ground. The process that we have put together has four essential parts. I'm going to walk through them step by step, so we can kind of dive a little bit deeper into what they mean for us. So this is where I started to get pretty excited, pretty off, out of the gate, in reading my article, because I hope that you see yourselves here. I see us here. If you think of the work that we are doing through ready and the planning, all the conversations all about equity. We have, we are putting together our long-term vision, that's the work that we've been doing. It defines equity. It allows us to communicate what our critical issues are, and there are goals and measures that go with it. So we have already made huge strides in this area. We've been able to take what we have and use it as a foundation for where we're going. Again, it's a plan, it'll change, but it gave us a starting point. So then we move to budgeting, the second step. It seems funny that this was Jan's step, but this was kind of Jan's step. So we have an inventory of programs, we've had it since 2019. Every budget offer that you receive has a list of programs that we monitor and make sure that we have everything recognized, everything budgeted for, everything communicated. And what Jan was able to do was take what she's learned at the city of Redmond, what she has learned before working with the city of Redmond, and identify the projects and programs that would allow us to make the biggest strides right out of the gate. Where do we have some low-hanging fruit? Where do we have some gaps? Where do we have some known risks? So Jan helped us establish where it is that we will focus in the next biennium, and we have now teams throughout the city that are working on those improvement ideas. So they are here right now. It's called planning. This is turn-the-curve planning. There's a lot of different kind of process improvement types of approaches that you could take. We are taking what was described in the GFOA article, because it does a great job of utilizing data and incorporating what community members and stakeholders feel about the services that are being provided. That's really our target audience, is to make sure that those receiving the services, that those that are customers of our programs feel that they have what they need, that felt equitable, it felt fair. And so we are taking that approach. Staff is looking at what can we do within that focus area that is low cost or no cost? So how can we write code? How can we do things like that? What ideas will require funding? What's one-time funding, what would maybe be some ongoing funding? And community engagement is a part of that. What have we learned from our customers already? Where will we think about where we'd like to go next? And then it comes to allocating the resources. So once we have an idea of what it is that we want to commit to in the next biennium, the things that will add the most value to us, the things that we can afford based on the other things that we are trying to implement as part of this budget cycle, it will then come to city council as part of the preliminary budget. You will see this. Before that, we'll provide you an update in August after we have completed the community engagement efforts. We'll be using the Civic Results Team process for external feedback this budget cycle, and we'll be utilizing our internal welcoming team. These are staff that have been onboard in helping us define equity for years, and it feels really great to take a product back to them for some feedback. So time-wise, we have started working on the proposals, working to understand our community involvement and engagement feedback, and here at the study session with you tonight. We have, the plans are that, we're calling them equity action plans. Those are due into the finance department and for getting ready for external and internal review in May, and then we'll do internal in July, right before we balance the budget, and then it will come to you as part of the preliminary budget. Going to hand it off to Jan to talk a little bit more about where we've been and how she feels that this will help us move forward.
It's good to be here again, and this is my first study session, so excited to be here. And I am really excited to have the opportunity to team up with money, finance, to make it happen. And so, so talking about equity. Equity, we're not, we're not starting from the ground zero. The city of Redmond has been doing equity since 2014 with the Inclusion Work Group, which, all the way to 2024, is why I'm here and have this opportunity to be supported in the way that I am in terms of realizing what equity is in the city of Redmond. And, so, the city of Redmond has demonstrated a steadfast commitment to equity and inclusion, and again, the 2014 Inclusion Workshop. And in this, we have been able to, this work, we're going to be able to define what equity is. And equity is, budgeting by equity allows us the opportunity, as a city entity, to define what equity means to Redmond. And understanding that the goal we are, is to be an intercultural society, city, that we are transitioning from an urban to intercultural. And what does that mean in terms of equity? And so, basically, in defining our goal, equity is going to be shaped around that in the sense of how do we recognize where the discrepancies are, the challenges are, and the priorities are? Let's see, my glasses on. And so, looking at programs that are, looking at, looking at the budgeting for criteria for equity is gaining commitment, and that is being able to define what equity is. And then, budgeting by program is being able to look at the issues beyond departments, so looking at them from programs, and being able to identify where the needs are great, where the needs are great, and then to reduce those needs within the community. And budgeting by programming allows us to assess the needs that are, that are not department-specific, but where the needs are. And that means looking at aggregated data, looking at investigating the data in the sense of telling how data tells a story. And so that means in a space like Redmond is being able to have, being accessible, making access for all abilities. And doing that, we've chosen to look at healthy and sustainable, which is looking at groundwater protection. And groundwater protection is something that we are doing, but how can we do that better and protect the fresh water that comes from the rain so that doesn't get contaminated? And part of that is about educating. So continuing the education program, going out into the community and engaging them in the sense of teaching them, informing them, asking questions, being available. Also, in terms of strategic and responsive, is being able to understand that Redmond has a, pretty much 50% of this population, its residents, are, English is a second language, and so therefore, how do we deal with limited English proficiencies, which is part of our Title VI responsibilities? And so, part of that is developing, expanding our translation services. For example, the real-time language services would allow someone to come into customer service and use their computer and talk in their native tongue, and being able to transfer, transmit that messaging to our English-speaking customer service individuals, and be able to communicate and serve those needs. And it also will be able to, be able to have English, limited English proficiency speakers to come to council and engage with you in a more efficient and engaging way. A key point to budgeting with equity is the component of community engagement. And community engagement is really part of what I would say the public health space in terms of, public health now deems public policymakers such as yourself as a public health issue, and it's part of the public health domain. So, knowing, knowing your constituents, getting feedback from them, being able to take these priorities and tweak them to meet their needs, so that we're not assuming that we know everything, and that we're getting input and we're in dialogue. And that's also in terms of, allows us to create this intercultural Redmond. So that means if people can feel like they are welcomed in City Hall, and can, their voices matter, and their needs are being met, and their concerns are, there's transparency, then they're more likely to feel welcomed and more likely to continue to engage. And creating this intercultural Redmond that I am, I'm hopeful, I believe that it can happen. And so, and then, we have vibrant and connected, and that is about, you know, Banji mentioned, Public Works mentioned, about accessibility, making sidewalks safe and such. And so, the mobility covers all those aspects in terms of making the city safe as well. And thank you. I'll hand it over to Chief Shepherd.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Appreciate it. And good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be with you, be before you this evening. And as we engage in this discussion on budgeting for equity, I would encourage us to prioritize the critical need for a robust emergency communication system here in the city of Redmond. Now, Redmond prides itself on its diversity and its natural beauty, its splendor, if you will. Yet, while we celebrate this, the geography and the demographics that we have here demands that we have a preparedness system in place for any and all potential emergencies. The safety of our community is the highest responsibility, and it's imperative that our residents, regardless of language or location, have access to timely and accurate emergency information. Investing in improved emergency communication system isn't simply just a gesture towards equity, it is a core responsibility and a commitment to safety and well-being for all those we serve. And so what you can see from this first slide right here, and I'll talk about the importance of mass communication and emergency management, is really that one of the key tenets is enhance community safety. Immediate and effective communication during times of emergency ensures that all residents are informed and can respond appropriately. Secondly, we want to make sure that we have inclusivity in our communications. That means implementing a multilingual emergency communication system that respects and acknowledges Redmond's diverse linguistic landscape, and ensures that non-English speakers receive critical information timely. We also want increased preparedness. By improving our reach and effectiveness of communication systems, like Alert King County, the city can increase its community preparedness and resilience against natural and man-made disasters. And fourthly, is fourthly a word? We're going to go with that. Community trust and confidence. Transparent and accessible communication builds trust between the city and our community, essential in emergency situations where timely information does save lives. And lastly, regulatory compliance. These are our best practices. Upgrading our emergency communication systems ensures compliance with safety regulations and aligns with best practices for disaster management in our diverse community. And when we talk about our regulatory compliance, we're talking about multilingual communications, we're talking about accessibility, and we're talking about culturally sensitive communications. Next slide, please. So what you can see from this slide right here, it's really what we need to focus on is these five key areas. Strategic planning for funding. Focusing on budgeting for equity allocations, on enhanced communication systems ensures that funds will be used where they have the most significant impact for our community. Community engagement and feedback, engaging with the community through feedback sessions will help us tailor our communication methods to the specific needs and preferences of our different groups here in Redmond. And our partnerships with technology providers. That means collaborating with the providers in advanced communication technologies such as evac, nixle, or everbridge, which can bring cutting-edge solutions to Redmond, further enhancing our emergency response capabilities. Monitoring our continuous improvement, and continuous improvement. Regular reviews and updates of emergency communication strategies ensures that we remain effective in incorporating new technologies and methodologies as they develop. And lastly, equity action plan. Develop specific action plans for improving equity and emergency communications that ensures that our systems are developed in an effective, fair, and accessible way for all of our residents. And I'll turn it back over to Director Cochran.
Thank you very much. So, just one example that we're working on to bring the equity lens to the programs that we have. These are four that we are highlighting. There's a lot of work going on throughout the city in this area, not only because we had been walking that path, but because others are interested, trying to get ahead of the curve, and incorporating this type of lens as we start new process improvement work. So, I'm excited. It's a really simple approach to a complicated issue that has a lot of different tensions to it. It allows us to start taking steps to making commitments, being held accountable to them, and telling the story through the budget. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Very exciting to hear. I think our council has been talking about this topic through all the budget cycles I've been on, and how we systematically add an equity lens to our budgeting process. So great to see this. Councilmember Stewart? Oh, just plus one. All right. Any questions from the council? Comments? Councilmember Fields?
I think this is more of a comment. There might be a question in it. I really appreciate putting structure to something, as Council President said, we talk about a lot. So I think putting structure in the budget process, and as Ms. Harrison said, it's good to have money meet the equity. Introduce the two, because, and I, in my past history, we did some of this initial work way back in, I don't know, 2012 maybe, at King County. And it started out really well. I'm not sure what happened, because I left the county, but they did a very similar, took a very similar approach. They understood that the lifeblood of this was the fourthly thing, which is trust, as Chief Shepherd mentioned. And that's, I think, by taking the approach that you're doing, you're giving that opportunity to build trust, not just in emergency management, but in people speaking out about what's missing, where we are missing things. So I like the approach that you're taking. It's sort of structured, yet understands that it's going to grow by building those relationships, and I think that's what you've described to us. I'm very appreciative, and I will do everything I can to make it successful.
Thank you. In response to that, I would have to say that you're right about trust. Understanding that governing in terms of solving social issues is one of the most daunting things that government has to do. And understanding one of the reasons why budgeting for equity can be so complex and challenging is that, that it has to do with trust, but it also has to do with fairness. And fairness is a term that's always kind of in partnership with equity. And so, in that, you have to realize that fairness is very, one of those, you know, very nimble and nuanced terms. And so, having a city understand what, understanding its space, and I see Redmond in this transition to an intercultural space that has a large population, almost 50% of the population, that English is a second language. And so what are, what does equity look in this space? And that is going to be the key driver in understanding how we are able to do this work. And again, trust, but also understanding that since the pandemic, that the public health as an entity has embraced community engagement as a requirement to keep the health of cities safe. And so, we have something to anchor that on in addition to budgeting for equity. And I think that the work that the city has done prior to my arrival gives me hope. It was one of the things that attracted me to this position, and so I think that the commitment long-term is here, so that it can transcend myself and Kelly, all of us who are sitting in this room, if we build this infrastructure based on trust, and really partnering and understanding our constituents, where that trust is established, I mean, who knows where we can go.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Salah Houdin?
Thank you. And yeah, I really appreciate this, you know, vision of looking at budgeting for equity. I was even looking at that graphic that you shared, where, you know, liberation is that target and that goal, and what we're trying to achieve. I was even thinking about the next step, where, you know, they're in the audience with no fence, but let's have them in the stands with everyone else. And so, creating that, that opportunity of how are we furthering this equity is really important. My question is actually right here, very specific to the mass communication during emergencies, on these no-cost, low-cost options versus ideas that cost money. I'm really interested in these ones that don't want to spend more money, but is there an analysis that's done to look at the reach that those options would have versus looking at those no-cost, low-cost options? And is there a cost-benefit analysis of how we can essentially reach every resident in Redmond if that does end up costing us more, but still gets the information out there, or vice versa?
Absolutely. I appreciate the question. We'll have to go back and work on making sure that we can bring forward some qualitative data for you. However, I would say that what we know right now, part of this critical exploration of mass communications during times of emergency, really led us to understand a couple of things. First of all, we're in an area and a region that leans forward into technologies. But technologies don't serve everyone in our community, and we have to be very cognizant of that. And so, there will be some endeavors where there will be cost. We don't believe, and I believe I have the emergency manager still behind me, unless she's crept out since I've gotten up here. But we don't believe that it's too heavy a lift to take on something such as a evacuation platform, or maybe a nixle platform, which is a mass communications. But then, also have that reach-back capability for non-technology means as far as going out and actually inputting data into our CAD system that we have already in place, which gives us notes that says this person lives here, they don't necessarily have any other means of communications. Case in point would be, you see car manufacturers nowadays are taking away AM radios, and that's really been a robust system that we've relied on for emergency communications, and that was a low-to-no-cost system for us. And now we're going to have to reflex to the idea that that doesn't exist anymore, and we're going to have to find the people who don't have, you know, a smartphone, or who are resistant to that, and input that information into our CAD system, again, another low-cost system for us, and then we can just go out and make those contacts with them during times of emergency. Something else that's pretty exciting that we've looked at, as we've done this, emergency manager and I, is something I just want to share, is we're looking at, there's something out there called eMERGs. So, very similar to emojis, but they're eMERGs. So they let you know exactly what's going on, so we can communicate with you, even though there's a language barrier, you get an emoji that shows you that there is a tsunami, or there's a wildfire, or something like that. So, again, something very simple. I believe those are actually free for us to actually capitalize on. So there's a whole bunch of different platforms that we can use, but I'll come back with more data as you requested.
Thank you, and thank you to all of you for the presentation.
Councilmember Stewart?
Well, thank you so much, and I imagine we'll be seeing this example back as a budget offer. This kind of offer would be, for me, just as exciting as an electric fire truck because of my experience in my own neighborhood and some connectivity. I've had access to alerts- I've had access to alerts through my school district, the Bellevue School District, but my neighbor's not having that same connectivity when there's an issue in the neighborhood. And so anyway, I'm very excited about that. And I just want to say, we are after liberation one more time here in the city of Redmond. And this is a really inspiring night. We do, I'll just offer to my fellow council members, our colleagues in the city of Tacoma have been using budgeting for equity for a while. And a couple of years ago, they did a session with AWC that has been recorded, and it's on-demand at the AWC library, if you're interested in checking out how they're using this iterative, values-driven process year over year. One technical question, and then a program question. Technical question, can we make sure that these slides and this presentation gets updated for the public so that they can have access? Thank you. And then there was a mention in the slide about some community engagement that was scheduled to kick off in April, and I was just wondering if we could hear a bit more about that and maybe what it looks like over the coming months.
That is more for those that are working on developing the Equity Action Plans. So they are working with those that they work with commonly. I don't know specifically what folks are doing, so we can bring that back and make sure it's a part of the presentation for you.
So just to understand correctly, folks who are putting together budget offers that include equity action plans, they're all kind of doing what they need to do those? Okay.
So for example, as Chief Shepherd worked to put together the example that he gave, that was informed and collaborated with stakeholders.
Absolutely. Perfect. Okay, that's wonderful.
It should be not only developed with some coordination, collaboration, but also then be reviewed by the Civics Results Team and the Welcoming Committee.
Great. And that reminds me that, as Ms. Figaroa has been sitting here all night, I've been thinking that perhaps actually, Councilmember Salah Houdin, it would be interesting to have an update on the volunteer program related to emergency management response. Maybe if we could do that in your committee at some point in the coming year. I don't remember if we put that on the work plan or not, just off the top of my head. Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Thank you. First, a comment about appreciating both the real-time translation services that we were talking about, whether it is here in City Hall, or if it is in a more robust emergency communication system. Literally today on my way in, it was helping a non-English speaker navigate where to go to a building here on the municipal campus. So, and that's, several times I'll run into this, so I absolutely love that we're putting money towards this, so that we can say, hey, we see you, you're welcome here, thank you for being here, and here's how to maneuver around. And this may not be the place to ask in this, but thinking about we are expanding and having more multi-unit dwellings such as apartment buildings, they're getting larger. When a fire alarm goes off, or an emergency system goes off inside of the building, it's in English. However, we also know that about 50% of our residents are renters, and we're going to be increasing that in these buildings. Is there a way where we can have that in multi-language?
Again, thank you for the question. I will have to talk to the fire prevention on that. I'm sure we can. Yeah, let me get back to you on that one, but if we can do it in English, we can do it in multiple languages, so I'd like to lean with yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? All right, I'll jump in with mine here. So following up a little bit more on the process as we'll see it going forward and using this model, great to have the example tonight. Will we see in the actual budget, that's the proposed budget that's delivered to us, in each section, these types of analyses for particular offers? How many will we expect to see throughout there?
So there will be four total coming forward. That will be former, formal action plans that are submitted as part of the preliminary budget. I anticipate including them in the budget summary document that we are planning to use to help guide our budget conversations. So it'll be in not only the larger budget document, but also in the slimmed-down version that you'll be getting to kind of synthesize the work. I expect that we'll review them by budget priority, but that may change as we get closer.
Got it. Thanks for that clarification. I saw you had the four, I thought those were four examples, but those are the four we'll focus on for this budget cycle. And then will we be using this framework just as part of, as you mentioned, kind of staff thinking through their budget?
It will be, I anticipate, much like process improvement work. So many years ago, we kicked off a big effort to learn lean, teach lean, get certified, and we had process improvement work really kind of going on all throughout the city. It is now a part of what we do. It is now a normal, you know, course of business. It's how we think about things. And I anticipate, I hope, that this becomes how we think about things. It becomes incorporated in all that we do, that we're not just waiting until we pick up the next budget to decide that we need to improve something. My hope is that we will use the budget to not only make commitments to future improvements, but also tell the story of not only what we committed to, but what we did on top of that, because I know there's going to be a lot more.
That's great. And especially in doing a deep dive on four areas and gathering some of those learnings seems like a great opportunity. I know we'll discuss some of this in our retreat next week, but really that ability, hopefully over time, to have that train the trainer, and, you know, staff being able to impart knowledge from one experience to another, so that we can scale that over time, seems really great.
We will also be more partnered with the Government Finance Officers Association. We will be not only learning from them and where they've been and what they've learned, but we'll be sharing our story as well. So that is always exciting to do.
Great. And one other topic, just since we have it on here, talking about emergency events that I would be remiss, since we have our emergency manager in the room, that I would highlight when we think about emergency events. I know it's not the one that we're deep diving on here, but something that we do hear, some feedback around every time that we especially have climate-related emergency events, like extreme heat, or, you know, big cold weather events, is really the impacts on people who are of lower income, or, you know, don't have access to either cooling during heating events, or the type of heating, or all types of different access. And a lot of questions, or even during smoke events, for example, you know, how we support our community and how we really can think about what support is needed for those with fewer resources within our community, so that we all have an equitable response to those events, I think, is something, obviously, Chief Shepherd, I think we always put it your way whenever we get these questions, but if I want to put one in the hopper for the next cycle, I would just highlight that one, since we do get that flagged a lot as questions about how do we respond and support everyone in our community, especially as we know that we're going to see these types of extreme weather events just increasing over time.
And I, just to let you know, that's at the forefront of, you know, what we think about. Those are the ones that we know are going to happen, you know? There may be an earthquake, there may be, you know, a tsunami or something like that. We know clearly there's going to be a heat event, we know there's going to be a cold event, and so we know those are more frequent, and so we prepare for that in advance. And part of that is reaching out to our more tenured population, who's living in maybe some of the apartment buildings that are not air-conditioned, they're more susceptible to both heat and cold. So we'll be a little bit more proactive. We reach out to them, communicate with them. We've been engaged with the Parks and Recs Director to make sure that we do have cooling facilities and warming facilities here. And now that we have the new senior center opening, we're going to have increased capacity. So that does remain at the forefront, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you. And I would just say, you know, I think with the same lens that we have here, as you said, doing that outreach to the community members to identify even more kind of innovative ways of how do we make sure we get them the information during those events about what they can access? How do we meet those needs and provide the support on transporting them or getting them to those resources, I think, is just another one where this tool will be so helpful for us to say, are there resources we need to invest in that in order to keep everyone in our community safe? So with that, I will close my comments. Any other comments or questions that came up? Okay. Well, with that, we'll just say thank you so much. Looking forward to continuing on in our budget journey throughout this year. And thank you so much for the work that you've put in already on this. This is an exciting new chapter for us in the city of Redmond.
Thank you.
The last item on our agenda is council talk time. So I will kick off council talk time with a couple of items, and then we'll open it up if others have comments or issues that they want to raise. A couple different pieces. First of all, good news. We have officially hired our new legislative coordinator. It's going to be someone you know. It's Deidra, who has been our interim legislative coordinator and decided to apply for the job. Council Vice President Forsyth and I were able to interview her as part of the interview loops, and just are really excited to be able to work with her. We'll be setting up regular meetings with her to be able to talk about needs for the council, as well as processes. She already has a lot of really cool ideas for the volunteer coordinator side of the position, as well as ways to improve things like our Ombuds process. So hoping to just really get her engaged, and we'll just note for all council members, reach out to Deidra with your legislative coordinator needs, and keep council leadership informed as you have ideas on the best ways to be able to engage that position, and make sure that we can take advantage of some of the goals on that. And we can always discuss that at council talk time, too. Secondly, just wanted to remind everyone, I sent out an email earlier today with more details about our upcoming retreat that will happen next week, since it's a fifth Tuesday, and so we'll have time during our usual council meeting time, starting at 4:30. We'll be gathering together with our mayor and directors, as well as Anita Page, who's been leading on some of the work that was actually referenced earlier tonight, on respect, equity, diversity, inclusion, and anti-racism, and really getting us to a citywide plan. I sent out an outline that had some worksheet questions. If council members, I know some people like reading and writing down their thoughts in advance, so Anita structured it so you can do that. You can also come just with your thoughts to be able to share, but it just gives you the sense of the types of questions that we're going to be asking to the council to get input. During the session, we'll first get to hear from the directors and mayor on the work that they've done with Anita to come up with some of these different principles. But really, before we bake this plan, wanted to have the council's input and direction on things that are missing, things we love, places to add and augment. So just looking forward to getting everyone's feedback and participation during that part of that retreat. And then the second half, we're really going to be continuing to work more on our work along with the mayor, on how we do collaborative governance, and how we work together effectively to serve our community, following up on some themes that were identified in our last retreat. So I sent out the notes again from that retreat to take a look at that, especially around the executive and council collaborative governance ideas that we came up with. And we'll get a chance to talk with Mayor Bernie and get her thoughts on that as well, and to look at how we do that shared leadership for our city. So I think those are going to be some great conversations, and look forward to seeing everyone there. We have budgeted time all the way until 10 o'clock from 4:30, but there'll be some breaks, there'll be food, and I think Deidra sent out, asked for everyone to send her your food order by, I think, two days from now. So if you can make sure to send her your food order, that would be great. But looking forward to having some of those really important conversations, and in particular, being able to get the input that I think Anita and our staff really need from the council to be able to move forward to something we can then look at in a future meeting to approve for our city's respect, equity, diversity, and inclusion work. Any questions on that? Okay, not seeing any here. One quick thing I wanted to check in on, we had talked about it during the FAC meeting, is the work plan. Director Cochran sent the FAC work plan around earlier today, and we were hoping to put all the work plans onto the May 7th agenda, so just wanted to see, does anyone want to see the FAC work plan in a committee? Because then we would wait until later in May to actually approve all the work plans, we could put that later, or is everyone good with just sending in any final comments you have on that one into Director Cochran? Seeing head nods and some thumbs up. Okay, great. So, and then just wanted to remind the council and the public about some exciting events that are happening this week. So tomorrow, you all should have received an invitation for an elected official's preview ride of the Two Line from Ariel at Sound Transit. If you haven't RSVP'd but want to join, you definitely check that out, as well as the Transportation Choices Coalition will be having a reception after that, so just wanted to flag that for council members. The second is that tomorrow, as we talked about in committee, there'll be a really cool paint day to be able to help paint a mural at the Redmond Senior and Community Center from 2:00 to 6:00. I think signup for the public has maybe already closed on that, but it'd be great to see council members out there at that, as we develop some beautiful public art for our new senior and community center. This Friday, there's going to be an Arbor Day celebration at Viewpoint Park at 3:00 PM. So if you want to come plant some trees and celebrate trees with Mayor Bernie and the rest of the council, invite the whole community out. It should be very exciting. And then this Saturday is the opening of the Two Line, which will happen at 10:00 AM at the Bellevue Downtown Station. But then there'll be a lot of great activities at Redmond stations afterwards. I think the festivities at the Overlake and the Redmond Technology Stations will be starting around 11:00, so go check those out. And just really excited for all of these cool things going on in our community earlier this week. We got to cut the ribbon on our new Redmond Technology Station Bike-Bike and Pedestrian Bridge, and it was great to see a lot of the council out there and celebrate. I think we had over 100 people on that bridge out to celebrate, because people were just so excited for it. So that was really great. Last items that I'll highlight here is that we've had a couple folks who don't have availability anymore to do subcommittees on the subcommittees that we established at our last council retreat. One, we have some openings on, we have two openings right now, on the Funding for Public Safety Committee Subcommittee. So if people are interested, reach out. And then, secondly, we also have one opening on the Bike and Pedestrian and Flexible Transit Planning Subcommittee. So don't have to answer now, but I'll just flag that. If you're interested, I think we're going to try to get the final groups on those subcommittees within the next day or two, so that everyone's committees can get scheduled, and we can start the work on those important pieces. So we'll just highlight that in case anyone, and if anyone wants to speak up now of ones that they're interested in, feel free to raise your hand. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I think since we had this conversation in retreat, it is helpful to remind ourselves a little bit. So I'm still planning to serve on the Funding Public Safety Subcommittee, and I'm hopeful that maybe our public safety chair might be willing to consider joining, but I don't know what else you have going on, and I'm not sure of the makeup of the other two. But I feel like this is a really important priority, and looking forward to working on this issue.
Councilmember Salah Houdin?
I guess, yeah, I can respond with confirmation that I touched base with Council President Kritzer, and would be very happy to serve on that Subcommittee, so.
Great. Wonderful. Okay. And then lastly, just wanted to note, we've gotten a lot of feedback about our discussion around the council rules on public comment, and wanted to check in with the council, as council leadership was discussing that maybe we would want to see it one more time in committee, just to be able to look at that item before it goes on to a vote. Originally, we had it planned for May 7th. There is room on the May 7th Planning and Public Works Committee. So we were looking at putting that there, so that we could have a discussion on some of those details there, instead of putting it on New Business that night. But wanted to just get a sense from the council, if folks would rather just see it on New Business and process it then, or take a little more time, look at it in committee, and then potentially move to consent. Any comments on that? Councilmember Anderson?
I'm happy with New Business.
Any other comments? Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Just for clarification, if we discuss it in committee on the 7th, then we could go ahead and put it on consent on the 7th as well.
I don't think it would be on consent on the 7th. It'd probably be the...
Then on the 21st?
21st, yeah, if we could come to consensus, yeah. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Or we could keep it on new business on the 7th and still have it on the Public Works Committee so that we still have it on the 7th. We could also vote to postpone it if it's on new business and we've decided we're not ready, so.
Yeah, we could do that as well. So, that way, we just have a little bit of extra time to have discussion during committee earlier in the day, and then we could have the vote on it later in the evening by keeping it on new business that night, if that sounds good to everyone. Councilmember Fields?
I'm, I think that I would like to see it get to vote as soon as possible. I'm not real clear where it is at. There was some confusion. There was a lot of different proposals during the discussion that I didn't expect to see. There were thumbs up, thumbs down. There was communication to people who had wrote in about it that, so I'm not quite sure where it's at. You know, I'm pretty clear on which direction I'm likely to vote. So, I think, well, I don't know. Can you clear up anything right now about where that is actually at? And then, I can better answer your question whether I think more discussion is.
Yeah, I think the items that had a majority of council agreement are, will be in there of the ones that were proposed that would be put for a vote. Obviously, anyone could make a change during the voting, but my thought in having a committee discussion is just that we've received more feedback since that discussion, and I just wanted to open it up in case the council wanted to discuss that further before going to a vote. But yeah, the items that were indicated by a majority of council will be brought forward as options for us to vote on.
So, the three or four different proposals that council leadership came up with would be, if we went to new business, those, that would be the motion? Is that what I'm hearing? That would likely be the motion?
Yes.
Going from three minutes to one minute?
If it'd be helpful, I can, I know that there were a couple tweaks that were made in response to some council member comments, and so I can make sure that Mr. Kenny sends those around to the council so it's clear of what would be posted. Councilmember Salhoudin?
Yeah, I think also to echo off of Councilmember Fields's question, is it all in one collective motion, or is there opportunity to split things up?
I think it would be all in, it would be to make the changes, but there could be, for example, an amendment to the proposed changes to a particular section live if you wanted to change something. So...
Just, oh, sorry. As a quick follow-up, sorry to cut you off. So, then, in committee, if we do go with Council Vice President Forsyth's recommendation, which I do like, having more time to talk about it, we wouldn't necessarily have a new, a different item in new business. We would just have to make an amendment to that if we do change our course during discussion.
If it were same day, which is why I wanted to put out the option if we wanted to have a committee and then have it on a different business meeting. But if we wanted to do that, what we could do is, we'd have a discussion during committee, and if we came to a certain consensus, then we could bring a different version that night, even though it would be posted. So, we'd probably want to do something like project it on the screen so that way everyone could see the changed versions based on the discussion earlier in the day. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I had agenda setting actually for 2Pw earlier today, so I just, I think an important question is, how much more deliberation do folks feel is needed? Because I currently have it scheduled for the available 10 minutes.
Guess I'd ask that to the council. Councilmember Salhoudin?
I'll just echo Councilmember Anderson and say, let's just have it on new business.
Okay. Well, I'm hearing, I guess with a show of thumbs, are folks good just keeping it on new business on May 7th? I'm seeing head nods, not thumbs, but all good. Yeah, cool. Mayor Bernie?
And we'll make sure that, I'll work with COO files, and we'll make sure that the council gets all the, exactly, the language so that you're clear on what it is you might pass forward or change or whatever. So, and we'll make sure we have a, you know, it'll be at the end of the meeting, so we'll have time to make all those decisions.
Yeah.
If major changes are needed with it.
Great. Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth?
I might suggest for ease of our conversation and for the, what's proposed, brought forward for new business, that they're, that they are individual motions, because it might just make it easier that we're not tracking amendments. I get the feeling there's at least one that's going to have some amendments.
If I might. Yes. Well, I will discuss with COO files, and we'll take all of this into consideration and bring forward something that is more user-friendly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
I, oh, sorry, it flew out of my head. Oh, I wanted to say, I agree, and thank you, Council President Kritzer, on, we don't do a lot of, we don't practice this new business skill nearly as much, but I really appreciate your comment on making sure the public is able to follow along. So, in the preparation for the conversation, if we can just make sure that someone is queued up to share materials for the public as needed, I think that that's really helpful. And I believe Deidra is on the line, so I wanted to thank her and congratulate her. Thank you for agreeing to continue to serve the council. We appreciate you.
Great. Well, so, we'll see that item on May 7th on new business. Thanks, everyone, for the feedback. And any other items for council talk time? Councilmember Salhoudin?
Yeah, really quickly, just two opportunities. One, I've been talking with Angela Brown from the Fire Department about council's participation at the Spring Safety Fair on May 18th. It's Saturday, May 18th. It's from 10:00 to 1:00. Would love to see council members either have a table or a booth there, and I can let her know sooner, hopefully sooner rather than later, but can send all of that information via email as well. And then, there's a Washington Collaborative Elected Leaders Institute from Association of Washington Cities. We received that email, and it's an interesting opportunity to be able to, you know, learn more about how we can be better leaders. And so, the, I think there's specifications, two to four leaders, either per jurisdiction or within regional coalitions. So, just wanted to throw that opportunity out there. I'm definitely interested. Would love to see if anyone else is interested as well. Can do that offline, too.
Are there other council members that are interested? Councilmember Stewart?
It certainly piqued my attention just because it's something new. Sometimes things that are new are also interesting. But certainly, I wonder, Osman, excuse me, Councilmember Salhoudin, if it would be worth checking in with our board member for AWC, which for our district is Wendy Wyker, just to understand a bit more about what are they looking for? It sounds like only one group per district will be moving forward, if I understood that correctly. And the info session is during one of our community center celebrations that's coming up, so maybe she could be a good resource for you.
That sounds good. I think I interpreted the email differently. I thought it was per city. So, yeah, that's, yeah, interesting. Yeah, I think you got that correct. Okay. Well, I thought it sounded interesting as well. Was there anyone else who was interested in that? See, Council Vice President Forsyth, Mayor Bernie? Do you have any comments on that, Mayor Bernie? Any insights? All right. Well, hopefully, we can gather a little bit more, and maybe we'll task you to bring back to our next council talk time or to email out to the council any information that's gathered. And if we have a group that wants to do it, that'd be great. Any other comments for council talk time? Seeing none? If there's no items for good of the order, this meeting is adjourned.